Good morning. It is nine o'clock. I'm sorry, I don't have a gavel. I'd like to call to order the October, excuse me, yeah, that's right, October sixteenth, twenty twenty four City Council meeting. Let the record reflect that all City Council members and City officials are present. If you would please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. We do not have an invocation this morning.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And since we do not have an invocation, I would just like to take a moment and have a moment of silence for all those who have been affected by the unbelievably destructive two hurricanes we've just had. So let's just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. For those who are in the audience, this meeting is being video recorded and it is being recorded from a camera over by where the mirror is on the wall. So I would ask that anybody that's in that part of the room especially, please do not talk during the meeting because it is going to pick up your voice even if you're whispering. And please also make sure that your cellphones are silenced. Okay, our next meeting will be on November sixth, twenty twenty four. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to pull, I'd love to pull a few things on this agenda, but the one that I'd like to take off and pull would be five feet, the Florida Amendment Chapter twenty-eight. I'd like to discuss this when we have a little bit more time. I think most of our time today should be concentrating on what's happened with our hurricanes here and what we're going to do and what's been done.
Is there any consensus for this?
And, and if there isn't, I'm going to go page by page with it.
The microphone's on because I'm not hearing any of the microphones here, so. Okay, because I'm not hearing it at all.
I'll just, I'll just comment, I'm not in favor of pulling that. We've had this on the agenda since the first meeting that we were going to do that got canceled. This is also a Florida statute change, so. I will be going page by page with this.
All right, we have until noon to be in this room, so we're going to have to keep the meeting moving. So I would, I would strongly suggest that you limit your comments on that agenda. Because it has been on the agenda. It was going to be on the first meeting in October agenda that had been canceled. So does anyone else have any comment on this before we move on? All right, so there's not consensus to take off the agenda. I do know that we are, we are going to move item two E to the next agenda. Yeah, any employee things that have been taken off the agenda for today. Okay, so we do have some proclamations that we're going to read and for all purposes of proclamations, the council members can feel free to stay in their seats for this meeting. And the first one is in honor of Veterans Day. And it is my honor to present this. Whereas World War One began on July twenty eighth, nineteen fourteen, and did not officially end until the Treaty of Versailles was signed on June twenty eighth, nineteen nineteen. Prior to the treaty, an armistice between the Allied nations of Germany went into effect on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month in nineteen eighteen. And whereas President Woodrow Wilson declared from November eleventh, nineteen nineteen as the first commemoration of Armistice Day, stating, quote, "To us in America, the reflections of Armistice Day will be filled with solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in the country's service and with gratitude for the victory, both because of the thing from which it has freed us and because of the opportunity it has given America to show her sympathy with peace and justice in the councils of the nations," end quote. And whereas the men and women of our armed forces have made our state and nation immensely proud and will continue to serve as inspiration for generations to come, we honor, respect, and value the service, dedication, and valor of the patriotic men and women who took up arms and swore an oath to defend our nation. And whereas the city acknowledges the contributions of veterans to projects which have made Punta Gorda a better place to live, including the Vietnam Wall of southwest Florida, the Purple Heart Plaque Program, and the Military Heritage Museum, and the William R. Gaines Junior Veterans Memorial Park. And whereas we show our gratitude for our veterans' exemplary deeds through appropriate patriotic celebrations and reflection on their sacrifices. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby observe November eleventh, twenty twenty four as Veterans Day and urge citizens to celebrate the love of country and willingness to serve shown by our veterans and honor them always, passed and duly adopted this sixteenth day of October, signed Lynn R. Matthews, Mayor, and accepting is Ms. Teresa Byrd from Punta Gorda Elks Lodge and Veterans Day Parade co-chair. Is Ms. Byrd here? Okay.
Veterans Day Parade was canceled.
Sorry?
The Veterans Day Parade was canceled.
That was going to be my comments. Okay, the next proclamation is Women's, excuse me, Women's Veterans of Punta Gorda Day, and Ms. Lux will do this.
Sorry, I'm reading this for the first time today, too. Whereas the state of Florida is home to the second largest population of women veterans in the United States with more than a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And whereas women veterans have contributed their expertise, dedication, and sacrifice to our nation in both war and peace since the Revolutionary War. The McLean American Legion Post one oh three recognizes and hails women veterans of all branches of the United States military. And whereas in nineteen ninety-two, the Veterans Healthcare Act began providing gender-specific care to eligible women veterans. The Veterans Affairs Administration has been expanding that care to give them the support and respect they deserve in seeking medical care. And whereas many women veterans struggle to seek out and take advantage of the many benefits available to them as they are currently unaware of the morat of departments of the Veterans Administration that can provide help and assistance. And whereas the American Legion Post one oh three will be hosting its first Women Veterans Seminar on October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, for the women veterans of Punta Gorda and its surrounding environments to enlighten and assist in seeking and receiving the many benefits and opportunities. And whereas the American Legion Post one oh three requests that October fifteenth be declared Women's Veterans of Punta Gorda Day, to be celebrated and never forget the sacrifices and dedications of women veterans. Now therefore, the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does now hereby observe October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, as Women Veterans Day of Punta Gorda, and duly adopted today, sixteenth of October, by Lynn R. Matthews. Karen Allen will be receiving this. But before Karen receives this, how many veterans do we have in this room? Please stand. Our heroes. Yeah, we do have women veterans in this room as well, so thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Is the podium mic on?
Hello? There I am. I, I thank you very much for the proclamation, and I thank all our veterans in Punta Gorda. And even though our, we had one person yesterday show up, I think the rest of it was because of the devastation and whatnot of the hurricanes. But we're moving along. We'll have another seminar on December third. And then next year, we plan to have a, a Women's Veterans Conference on October fifteenth. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
You can leave it on, there's going to be one. Okay, next we have a proclamation for Florida Native Plant Month, and Councilmember Peterman will read this.
Whereas Florida's native plants provide critical. Sorry. Whereas Florida's native plants provide critical habitat for all wildlife, including bees, butterflies, and other pollinators. And whereas the City of Punta Gorda is home to parks that showcase and conserve native plants such as the Punta Gorda Nature Park and Ponstaleon Park. And whereas more than three thousand native plant species inhabit Florida, at least two hundred and fifty-six species are endemic to Florida and do not occur anywhere else in the world. And whereas the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services has designated more than five hundred and fifty native plant species are almost twenty percent as endangered, threatened, or commercially exploited, thus underscoring the need for greater public recognition and protection. And whereas native plants import beauty to develop landscapes and require less resources because they are naturally adapted to Florida's climate and rainfall patterns. And whereas October is an especially vibrant month to see native plants in bloom and provide opportunities for the public to appreciate the beauty and natural value of native plants. And whereas the preservation of Florida's native plants is an essential prerequisite to the conservation of our native wildlife for future generations. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim October twenty twenty four as Florida Native Plant Month, passed and duly adopted in regular session the sixteenth day of October twenty twenty four, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, the Honorable Lynn R. Matthews, Mayor. And unfortunately, Dr. Ava Lavister, President of the Mangrove Chapter of the Florida Native Plant Society, could not be with us today, but I'm sure the clerk will make sure that she receives this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for City Government Week, and Vice Mayor Drabber will read this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I kind of want to say thank you to all of the staff within the City of Punta Gorda for the last two or three weeks here. We've had to deal with it. I've been here almost thirty-three years now, and obviously I've never seen anything like this. Talked to some of the older folks that have lived here in the city a very long time. Some said there was something that happened like this sixty-some years ago, others said about ninety years ago. To have two hurricanes where both winds were out of the west, and that's, that's the crucial part that brought in the surge, because that doesn't happen. When Charlie hit here and that was so devastated the city, the winds were out of the east. With that, the waters went out of the harbor. And for those of you who haven't ever seen that, it was just a little stream of water in the very center of the harbor. The rest of it, all the water was blown out of it. That's kind of unique to see as well. But when you look at our staff, our police and our fire and our public workpeople, all they had to deal with in the last two or three weeks has been nothing short of still work, well, the jobs that they get. They did an amazing, amazing job. So it's my honor to read this proclamation. Whereas the City Government is the civil government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas City Government provides service programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home. And whereas City Government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public comment and the understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas City Government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of public service and their benefits. And whereas City Government Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city staff to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that shape and influence the branch of government. And whereas the Florida League of Cities and its member cities have joined together to teach citizens about the multiple governments and through their variety of activities. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda does hereby proclaim October twenty first through twenty twenty-four as City Government Week. And the City of Punta Gorda encourages all citizens, City Government officials, City employees, to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. The City Council further encourages citizens become more involved through volunteering and that the city participate in the annual Citizens Academy, passed and duly, passed and adopted in this regular session, sixteenth day of October, Lynn R. Matthews, Mayor. And I think, Sarah, are you getting this? Who's getting it? There.
The reason that we still read this was we did have City Government Week events planned, but the point of this is not that it's true what was said, but that City Government Week, all those events have now been deferred. And Sarah can talk about the deferral of the whole event schedule for City Government Week.
Yes, we are working to reschedule most of the events to spring of twenty twenty-five. There are a handful that we will be moving forward with, like the Build a City event that would be rescheduled. It was going to be held at the library. It will instead be held at the Cooper Street Rec Center for the children that will be attending their program during fall intercession. We will also still be holding a scaled back Fall Festival over at Cooper Street Rec Center the same day and time as was originally planned, October twenty-sixth, from four to six.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to hurricane updates. And I'd like to also echo Mr. Drabber's comments. The city staff, they've just been exemplary for the past few weeks. I mean, morning, noon, and night, every single day, there has been nothing short of a miracle going on in our city every single day. And all of you put your lives on hold. You left your families during hurricanes when you could have been home with your families, keeping them there for moral support with you. And it's, it's just been a crazy, crazy month. So thank you all for everything that you've done to keep the city moving forward, and we really appreciate your efforts. And with that, we will do hurricane updates.
I'll just start off by saying, obviously unprecedented in the last two years with that five hurricane events, three with major impact. We started with Ian on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, and obviously the other two that had major impacts were Helene and Milton. Helene wasn't intended to have impact, it was in the Gulf, and the surge was projected at two to five feet, and that impact wouldn't have been more than, we've seen with some other minor storms, obviously that did not occur. We had major impact from that. Then, of course, we had other storms such as Adalia and Debbie that were not the major impact that we're seeing that still had impact in the city. So within two years, we've had five hurricanes. Within the last year, we've had four of those, which started with Adalia. And then, of course, we had Debbie, and we had Helene and Milton. And in the last month, we've had two of those major impact out of the five. So the city's been challenged in making sure we can properly address and handle those hurricanes and the mitigation thereof. The staff has done a marvelous job. Everyone's been at it twenty-four seven. In some regard, we've had the EOCs open, we've been sitting there day and night, watching the storm forecast, watching the storms that occurred, and then the mitigation afterwards. So we want to give the general update that will mirror some of what you've seen every day. We have morning and afternoon updates to council when it's put out on our website, et cetera, daily. And we want to make sure that council was aware of what is currently happening and ongoing efforts to mitigate the storm damage. With that, our Fire Chief, Emergency Management Personnel, Holden Gibbs.
Thank you. Holden Gibbs, on our fires, on the record. Exactly what City Manager just said. Our guys have been working hard. There's a lot of prep work that goes into preparing for these storms. There's a lot of uncertainty that we deal with, you know, before, during, and after the storm. You just never know exactly what's going to hit you. So we try to prepare for the worst and hope for the best. There was a lot of preparation for Milton after seeing what Helene did. And we expected, we expected it to be worse than it actually was. Again, a lot of flooding, a lot of issues. We see that the, you know, there's still some traffic lights that are still out. It's causing some, you know, traffic concerns. We've seen multiple accidents from those. We've seen multiple fires that have popped up after these storms, either from electric vehicles, like bondlores, scooters, things like that, definitely batteries. We've seen, as power has come back on, and I report, I think there's, we're down to forty. I don't know if they're just customers for FPL that are without power at the moment. But at one time, it was fifteen thousand. So they've done a pretty job of restoring that. But with that comes those problems of, hey, we have homes that are still saturated or waterlogged, and we've seen a couple of fires with water heaters, and just some other general electric concerns, and then just regular flooded vehicles that have, so I want to try to charge their batteries and pop fires as well. So we've been dealing with a lot, not just our staff, but Public Works, police. Everyone is kind of band together. We're, we are, I guess I would say, cross performing on doing duties. It's, it's, it's police and firemen that are, that are trying to help out with, with the only one to be handled by Public Works. And I guess Public Works is handling stuff that they wouldn't normally handle on a normal day. So you see all hands on deck out there right now. So we just urge people to still be cautious when you're out on the roadways. Numerous accidents out there. A lot of additional calls, still a lot of fire alarms that we're responding to on the fireside. So, but you'll see the building, building officials, building inspectors out, still assessing damage. That's going to take weeks to get all that accumulated and done. They are working every day trying to get all that assessed. City infrastructure wise, a lot of the damage that we saw with Milton was almost the same as what we saw for Helene. We did see an increase in, in storm surge come up from Milton. We haven't got the exact numbers from the county or state to say exactly what we had, but I'm predicting it was, it's probably going to be in that nine-foot range, eight and a half to nine foot, depending on where you are. There are some areas that might have been, been higher. But what we saw at the fire station, we watched it on video. For Helene, it came up about three quarters of the way up of our front driveway, or apron, that we call it. And for Milton, it came all the way to the, to the garage doors. So I guess I could let the individual department head to maybe tell them exactly what they have going on. We know there's going to be issues trying to get all the boats removed. I know the police department's working on that already, trying to notify people and say, hey, here's where your vessel's at. They notified FWC, they're looking at what the procedure is to, to get our city put back together. And I would just like to commend all of our staff that have really put a lot of effort into, to cleaning up, getting the sidewalks to where you can walk down. And we had two, three, four inches of sludge, just that silt from the bottom of the, of the harbor that's washed in and just really devastated a lot of businesses, homes, and our streets and sidewalks. The guys have been working tirelessly to mitigate that and get that up without necessarily just washing it down into our storm sewers, which is going to block those and cause future flooding. So I know that the Public Works Director has some plans on, on what he's trying to do for there. So if you want any of the other directors to, to give any briefings, I'd welcome them to do that at the start.
Yep, thank you. The structure has worked. We've been working as a team. Everyone's been doing whatever is necessary to help mitigate. So I hope we can start with Chief Davis. I know that Dave Smith, they've been working, Davis Smith slash, they have been working tirelessly as well. And as I said, the structure's been in place for all the departments, and it's worked well, and everyone has been working as a team to make things happen.
And that's absolutely true. Chief James Smith, the Punta Gorda Police Director. Sarah, I actually put a really fast PowerPoint together yesterday. Sarah's pulled it up already. So talking about Hurricane Helene, obviously, as soon as we start knowing there's a storm brewing, we get everybody together, have them, make sure they have their families taken care of. With Helene, we thought the storm surge was going to be around three to five feet, rainfall, three to six inches, which was going to contribute to flooding. We, we, we expected flooding. EOC put out evacuation notices to that low-lying area and areas prone to flooding, as you guys know. We moved our assets out to FSW at that time because thinking the storm surge wouldn't reach out to them, to that area. So we felt comfortable with that. We did go around and notify every mobile home park that these evacuation orders were in place for them. A lot of people did not heed the evacuation orders with Hurricane Helene. These were the roads that just closed that were flooded in the morning. And then, Sarah, if you can, and then by late that evening, we started getting water coming in on forty-one northbound and southbound, about a foot of water. We had to close those, the bridge, both bridges, because you just couldn't traverse through them. By eight forty-five that evening, the officers had to divert traffic away from downtown. We couldn't send loaders down forty-one because the area in front of Gettle and Publix was, was flooded. The only way we could get people out was to go Charlotte to Dupont to Elizabeth and down to Taylor. That was the only area of the city where people could move in and out of that night. And then Chief Gibbs, as he was talking about, we started to see it coming up to the, the Fire Department, the Police Department. So we did not have vehicles that could traverse in the water. So we were getting calls for help, and we could not respond to that help. We had no, other than the one high-water vehicle that the Fire Department has, it was rough. So we reached out to some of our, our partners. Northport Police Department came. We had, they brought their high-water Bearcat. And by now, I think most of you have seen the Fat Trucks Supertrack, which is a company that's off of Airport Road, volunteered these fat trucks. And they brought them in, they're up there on the left-hand side, the picture of them, brought them in that night as well. DeSoto County came out, Charlotte County Fire Department came out, our heroes, Public Works, with the two front-end loaders. We literally put people, we had seventy-seven calls, seventy-seven rescue calls, and we literally put people in the front-end loader bucket and got them out of there. You can see down the far right-hand, you have the fat truck, that was a fat truck rescue, where we got people up in there. Up on the top right-hand corner was one of the front-end loader rescues. So it was, it was an amazing teamwork effort. We ended up rescuing a hundred and twenty-one people and thirty, thirty animals. And Charlotte County Transit, I have to put a shout out to them because they sent us all the buses and we were able to transport everybody to the shelters. So we can just fast forward over to Milton. So Milton, we were a little bit better, I think. We had, we had a lot, we had a good plan in place for Milton. We expected eight to twelve feet of storm surge, and we moved over to, we sheltered our people at FSW because if you guys remember, we were able to create an MOU with them that allows us to shelter there and set up our EOC. So we were able to do that.
This was the first time.
This is the first time we did that. And granted, there, we know that if power goes out, there's no generator in place. We, we were prepared to deal with that. And it's something we've been working on, but we're not quite there yet. But anyways, we, so we got everybody over there. Evacuation orders went out for A, B, and C zones. So we ended up driving through every neighborhood, gave evacuation orders on the PA, reached out to the mobile home parks personally, at the offices as well. And I want to put a shout out to our citizens because they actually listened. We, it was about five twenty, once we started to see, the winds got so high that we had, we had to pull everybody in for safety purposes, along with CCSO's County Fire Department and Inglewood Fire, all did the same. So we coordinated that. We did lose power at FSW, so hindered our operations a little bit, but our people were pretty resilient and made it work. About four-thirty in the morning, we were able to start deploying again, and we had everything ready to roll, sent the fat trucks out, the F-250, our marine officer here, A.J. Russell, went out and that, and our Fire Department's high-water vehicle to assess whether we could actually move. And we were able to get to our police and Fire Department, but there were still roads that weren't passable. But we only had two rescue calls that, two calls in the queue, period. And they were both rescue calls. One was a man that was at, and his wife was at Sharp Shore Point. He had driven to the hospital thinking it was open. They got trapped in water. And then the other was a lady with her three children that had come in overnight, but luckily by the time we got there, she was okay. But there was another person that walked up and needed to be rescued. So they were able to take him out there. Several traffic lights out in the city, and most of the roads, like I said, were impassable for our patrol vehicles. Our patrol vehicles cannot go in any kind of high water. So that's a, something I'm going to mark on my after-action report. But as you know, still had a lot of lack of power throughout the city, traffic lights down. We have one traffic light that's still out at Southbound forty-one and Olympia. And Rick, if I'm not mistaken, a couple of weeks to repair that, because the whole, basically, system over there is damaged. So there's boats all over the place. So just to touch on the boats, and then I'll let the next director talk. I know I'm talking too long. But the boats, right now, if they're in water, if they're in water... But the boats, right now, if they're in water, if they're in water and they're sinking or they're, they're at the derelict status, we're going to have to do with, FWC will take over those investigations, but they'll do a full derelict vessel investigation. However, if the owners can get those vehicles, those vessels floated and back to kind of an at-risk situation, they can then work on that turn-in program. If you remember, FWC has a program where you can write, write, turn a boat over to FWC and then they will get the boat out. So if the vessel is on land, and David, I just sent you some information this morning, you hadn't had a chance to look at this yet, but we, we might be able to do it as kind of like lost and abandoned property. We'll, we'll put a notice on the boat. This is, I, I need your opinion on this later on today, that we can remove it within five days. We'll put a notice saying, you got to remove it. If they don't remove it, we can remove it within five days and then dispose of it. So basically, it's still go after the owner for the cost of that, but it gives us the power to move that off of city property. So we consulted with FWC on that. So hopefully that works out, but we know we've got to deal with a lot of that.
And I will mention that through the first one, we had personnel that were trained on the fat truck use. That's a specialty vehicle that's not very high water, but amphibious. So if the water indeed is above the fire capability, it turns into a boat and can actually be used for high water rescue in that regard. You could drive it through the harbor.
That, yeah, that vehicle's literally the only vehicle that could go in anything that, whatever, whatever height of water. So that was, that was great that they, they allowed us to use it again at this time because they actually had a PO in place, our Lee County Sheriff's Office that was trying to buy it and they, it didn't come through that morning. So he said, I care about this community and we're going to let you guys borrow it again. So thank you super.
Right, thank you for that. And that's also pertinent for things such as vessel rescue. If someone has a sinking vessel and you have to rescue in some regard, but you need a resilient vessel, that will do that.
And goes in eight months, watering. So I don't know if one or that.
Yep, but if we could have our building official to give an update, going post-storm, what you've been seeing in the large city.
Been all very, very busy. At first, I'd like to thank all the departments for coming together as a team. They did really well. A special thank you to the IT actually, because they helped us out quite a bit. There was a lot going on after Helene and then just prior to Milton, to try to give you an overview of everything that happened. I was in contact with Charlotte County quite a bit prior to Milton coming in. We used our own storm assessment, one-two survey, one-two-three for Helene. And then the EOC in Charlotte County decided they wanted everybody to be on one software. It was a tough call, but it was a last minute decision. I went ahead and decided to go with it. So we used the exact same assessment software that Charlotte County used. Todd was great. He got, you know, he got it updated, got it sent out from the inspectors only. I think the city stayed on their old, up assessment. And I was able to meet with the guys Friday morning, got them trained on it. So that's the assessment we used. So if anybody asked for the building portion of it and the storm assessment, we used exactly what Charlotte County used. As far as storm assessments go, and I thought we had a handle on Helene and then Milton comes along. So as we stand right now, I would say we're probably maybe in the sixty to sixty-five percent range of being done. The guys have been working really hard. We're going to be slowed down a little bit because we're trying to keep up on our normal inspections that come in, along with trying to complete storm assessment, along with plan review. We're in good shape with inspections so far because we've been able to catch up on our actual building inspections. We're a little bit lagged on the plan review, but we're working on it. As we stand right now, we've got documented 930 structures with some sort of damage. Three of those at the moment are pretty much deemed as destroyed. A couple of those, I mean, might be from the fires that the chief mentioned, but we might have some more coming in as we go along. Just to give you a general reference, I mean, Helene was bad enough. Milton brought in two to three feet more along the harbor, our historic area in the downtown area. Now, in personal opinion, I think it was a main rose, once you get back in the PGI aisles, the storm surge is only six to 12 inches more, which is very, very fortunate for those people. So because of that, the affected number is really high, 495 with a 930. Effective means it actually entered the garage area, but did not go into the living area. So that, that's a big plus. But once it goes in the garage area, you generally have damaged AC units or other items along with it. So our major, we're sitting at 374 right now. Major meaning it did enter the living area. So we're sitting at 353, so we're about half of them because you got to put the major with it. 374 with major, that means they got probably about four inches of water into the house. That means floor is coming out, drywall's coming out, you know, baseboard, door casing, that type of item. I'm sorry, that would be mine, 374. So major, we have 58. Major meaning they had feet of water in their house, anywhere from a foot to three feet. The general that I've seen is somewhere in the, in the range of 16, 18 inches inside houses or buildings. The main reason is, again, personal opinion, the storm peaked and then came back down really, really fast in that peak. You see the watermarks on the outside, but then because it peaked and retreated, they didn't quit quite as much on the inside of the structures, as long as the doors, windows, and everything were closed. Watermarks are kind of hard to find at this point, too. So with that being said, with Helene, we had made up some special permit applications to try to help the residents come through pretty quick. Last minute Wednesday and Thursday, I had one of my staff help me and she updated it for me, including Milton. Again, Alicia with IT, she responded to my email like that and got it posted on our website. So it was actually posted before even Milton was done. So the application's on the building website, it's printable, I mean, it's fillable, so they can go ahead and just fill it in, answer their questions. And they don't even have to print it if they want. There's an email address at the top. They can just email it right to the building department. We'll go ahead and review it. And as long as they, they're staying with just repairing storm damage, it's something we can just look through the building department pretty fast.
And that's expedited review?
It's, it is expedited, yeah. So we're, we're hoping, we're, I mean, right now, we can turn it around in less than 24 hours. I'm assuming it's going to get busier. So I'm still trying to maintain a 24, 48 hour turnaround on those. As long as the residents understand, as soon as you start deciding, well, I can do this work anyways, I'm going to remodel my kitchen, or I'll move this bathroom over here, make my bedroom bigger, that's, that's something completely different. So that's going to be back in a regular plan review agenda. So if you stick with your storm damage, you really just want to get back in your house, you want to replace that drywall, some receptacles that got wet or whatnot, we'll, we'll have them through fast. We got special permits for that. Also making up some other special permits for some other application types that hope that can get out soon. We had a handful of, we have a handful, we have a handful of buildings in, over the downtown area here. For some reason, FPL decided to pull their meters. I'm not really sure why. FPL usually doesn't pull meters unless the service itself or the electrical panels were underwater. We have actually not found any electrical services on the building. I'm not talking about transformer, the actual meter height on the building or panels. We did not find any underwater. I've been working really hard trying to get ahold of FPL. I've probably got about six messages out right now. The gentleman that called me, he's actually at 259 McGregor. So if you're watching, I'm working hard, trying to figure out how to get your meter back, but we're working on it. I'm not sure why they pulled those. Other than that, we're probably going to be, I would hope maybe towards the end of next week, we might be getting pretty close to getting the actual storm assessment done. Permit wise, mainly right now, what's coming in is all your AC change out permits. We've actually had 38 AC permits issued so far. Those permits contain multiple units. So I would say some words upwards of 100 AC units being changed at this point, even within, you know, the last five days or so. Storm repair application was low because they started coming in and out there. We got 16 of them, but then everything backed back off because Milton came in. I feel bad for the homeowners because the insurance companies are going to want them to try to document this two different ways. They try to have to document their damage as Helene and separate, separate documentation for the Milton damage. So it's going to be tough for them. Any questions? That's kind of where we're standing. Thank you. I do want to say one more thing if I can. There's a lot of organizations out there just trying to help. I had one particular reach out to me. It's Charlotte Harbor Sunset Rotary Club. They're putting a bunch of volunteers together. The residents need help cleaning out their homes, you know, even taking out wet drywall rugs or whatnot. Their organization, you could contact, they will bring people to your house and help you and volunteer and do whatever they can do to help you.
Ron, you might go ahead and make some sort of statement regarding the use of unauthorized, unlicensed contractors?
I can, yeah. And you definitely don't want to use any unlicensed contractors. You want to make sure everybody's licensed. Even if you pull a permit as an owner builder, if you hire anybody in, it really would be your due diligence to make sure that they are licensed and insured. The main reason why that, to help you out a little bit, the, you know, the state decided to try to help homeowners out. So owners, I mean, if you own the building and it's for your own use, you can pull a permit to restore that building. So in Florida, owners are ultimately responsible to start with. The only protection they normally have is that contract between them and a contractor. So once you act as an owner builder, you are standing there by yourself. If you have a problem with people that you hire and bring in and they're unlicensed, I really can't help you. Department of Business Professional Regulations can't help you. It's on you. So if you're not acting as an owner builder, you hire somebody in, we're going to make sure what's, you know, make sure they get a permit. Ask them, did you get the permit? Post the permit. If you have that permit, you be sure the building department checked that contractor, make sure they were properly licensed, insured, registered with the city by order.
Rick, Public Works?
Good morning, Marquini, Director of Public Works for the record. Some of the things I was going to say that chiefs have already mentioned, but you know, just your kind words are appreciated about Public Works. They work very well with police and fire. So thank you. With Helene, besides the things that have been mentioned, we did make a, a run through town with the garbage trucks and the loaders and dump trucks. And we accumulated about 1,200 cubic yards of couches, chairs, trying protective measures. Most of it was Milton, a lot of facility damage, flooding, a lot of our parks, the control panels to our lighting, our bathrooms are, are just gone. So there's going to be a lot of infrastructure improvements that have to be made. And you have to remember, it, we may have power in certain areas now, but they were submerged in saltwater. You know what's going to happen. It's going to rust and it's going to probably not work over time. So right now, we have two debris haulers coming in. They should be working now. They had to get their trucks certified this morning, but they're going to start in the historic west side downtown, starting this morning. And then by the end of the week, they go have five trucks. The mud and the muck was mentioned. That is such a hard project. It's just soup, trying to scoop it up. And I understand some people get upset. They, they have to dry the muck out. They have to like push it, they try to get it in a pile. And then where they've moved it, it kind of dries up and I can pick that up and it's a, it's just a process and it takes a while. So please be patient, but I think it's looking cleaner already. We have ash grit as our debris hauler. They're the main people doing the work. Prompt towing volunteered to help us. We really appreciate their volunteering. And then we have another contractor in town that's been helping, MD Pressure Washing. So they've been helping a lot. And then of course, our folks and DOT is helping with the DOT Roads, Mary and Olympia in the downtown area.
Like we're five, we're all synchronized, some more.
Yes, thank you for reminding me of that. Everything's just running again. But it's just been everybody on deck. We're trying to get to downtown. That's the worst, not just downtown, but that's got to hit the worst. So as we get more trucks, we're going to do the historic east side and start moving out into the community. We are picking up household garbage. We've been doing that since the end of last week, so that will continue. And we're going to be picking up the debris that is small, a wheelbarrow, we have a couple of branches, we'll pick up the small, small stuff. But the larger stuff, that's going to be ash grit picking that up. So that will go that way. We did have a washout on Colony Point near the condos. So our staff worked on our portion of that area and got one lane open for Colony Point condos. And then they got damage on their side, which they've got to fix. So we'll make it all come together and make it work. We reached out to DOT to inspect our bridges and happy to say, our four bridges are fine, which is good. These are the ones in the aisles, the three in the aisles, the poniesta. And that's kind of an overview. If anybody's having questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, you said poniesta.
It is. That's what it is.
Morning, Acting Utility Director Tom Spencer for the record. Learned a lot of things with Helene that we put in place with Milton pre-storm. We turned off about 25 lift stations that we found that were impacted directly after the storm. We found that there were four, I'm sorry, 10, 10 lift stations without power than being a generator. So we actually made a request with the EOC and with the state and they had those generators that evening. Currently, we only have four lift stations that are still on generator power. Three lift stations need pretty major repairs. Three cabinets need to be raised up higher than they are currently. With everything that we did, we managed to keep the master pumping facility on Henry no higher than seven feet. Everything ran in there very well. With Helene, we saw about 60 lift stations and 1,293 manholes impacted. We expect that number to be a little higher, but because of the actions taken pre-storm, you know, there, there were no overflow events. The water plant and wastewater plant, state operational the entire time through the storms. There were no major line breaks. There were a few minor line breaks, mainly service connections on the water side. Our staff, we will address those rather quickly. We still urge our residents, if you see a break, if you see a light on a lift station on, please contact us and let us know. I've had a couple of calls where they said, oh, this light's been on for four or five days. If you see it on and you know it's on, just give us a call. We're happy to take that information. We've worked with Public Works and Wastewater Collections, the, out at the water treatment plant, we did have a little impact on the intake there. Had that cleaned the very next day and everything was back to normal there. Overall, the utilities department did very well with these two events. And I can tell you firsthand, being at the EOC and working with Charlotte County Utilities and the other utilities in the area, we have a really great staff and they operate like well-oiled machines. So do you have any questions?
I'll just mention that some of the lift stations, even ones where you may see lights, they're designed that when they get high enough, they overflow by gravity into a duplex station, for example. So they're still being processed. It's not that it's not working or running out of the ground.
Yeah, the 25 that we had turned off, that all will rapidly flow to the next closest manhole station and then eventually to a duplex station. All the duplex stations are left on.
And it just mitigates the peak flow for the master pump station.
One other thing to add, I can tell One other thing to add, I can tell you that our residents definitely did take the advice to evacuate based on the flows alone. Typically, the water treatment plant will see a flow of about, you know, five and a half to six and a half million gallons per day. During the storm, we saw a usage below 2 million gallons, which that means there's nobody using water, which is a, it's a good sign. So hopefully, they continue to listen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one more, HR Jeff, we're recording. Do you have any updates on our insurance carrier that's responsible for the mitigation efforts?
Morning, everybody. Jeff Payne, HR Manager. Nobody thinks about HR when we get through these storms, but we're heavily involved in our risk management role. So we've been working with Blue Sky as a remediation mitigation company. They were here after Helene and Forest. They came back after Milton. So we had two insurance adjusters, one from our regular insurance was here on Saturday. The flood insurance adjuster was here on Sunday. We took them around to see as much of the damaged city facilities has been reported. Unfortunately, some of our departments still aren't reporting known damages. So we had them working in the City Hall Annex in Forest at the weekend, so we could have that building open for business Monday morning. They got that building mucked out. It was, the mud and everything else was in the first floor, the building, the garage, the parking lot, the sidewalks, everything else, right? So all that had to be cleaned, pressure washed, et cetera. So we managed to get that done. Cooper Street Prep Center had flooding, so we had, that facility has been cleaned and sanitized. Herald Court, parking garage, had a second flooding event. They flooded both Helene and Milton, so we've had Blue Sky over there. After Helene, they came with tons of equipment, drying equipment, power generators, portable waste units, et cetera. A lesser response after Milton, but those, that building has sustained a fair bit of damage from the two storms and flooding. So we're going around taking care of it as much as we can. We took the adjusters over to the Marina, through the parts, right? To see all the damage there, it's substantial. So we're trying to work through it as best we can. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you all very much for the updates and we hope everyone did not sustain a lot of damage to your homes and we hope that everybody's safe. Okay. Before we open up the floor for public comments, is there anyone in the audience that has submitted a resume for a boarder committee appointment and would like to introduce themselves? Please come to the podium, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Matthews and members of the council, my name is Adele Higgins. I am seeking reappointment to the Code Enforcement Board. I am the current Chair of the Board, so this would be my second three-year term. I submitted my resume. I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to give you view it. I'm a retired Army Officer. I am a retired administrative law judge with the US Department of Labor. And most importantly, I've been a resident of Ponte Gordo for about four years. And I appreciate the council's consideration of my nomination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to introduce themselves as a boarder committee nominee?
Good morning, Council. I'm Jaha Cummings. I submitted my application for the Police Pension Ward. For several years, I offered-
What was your name again?
I'm Jaha Cummings. And so I provided investment advice to pensions and sovereign funds for several years. And actually now, I'm a partner with Middle Park Investment Bank and just like to be able to offer that experience as well as the research capability of our firm to, you know, just ensure our officers have strong retirement.
Anyone else that would like to introduce themselves? Okay. We will move on to the citizens' comments portion of the meeting. And I have housekeeping notes to read into the record first. If you have not already done so, please silence all personal devices as this meeting is being recorded and it disrupts the proceedings when phones go off during the meeting. As a code of conduct in the council chambers, members of the public should familiarize themselves with the rules. Members of the public who wish to address the council should use the guest podium at the center of the room, the podium to the right of the stage, excuse me, we don't have a podium at the right of the stage, my apologies. Speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name for the record. Each person will have three minutes to speak. Sharing minutes is not permitted. Speakers are to direct all comments to the city council, not the audience or any one individual council member. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience is not permitted. When there are many individuals who wish to speak, speakers should try not to reiterate lengthy comments made by others to ensure an effective and efficient meeting. This ensures everyone has an opportunity to speak. Audience and speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. No applause, sidescar, conversations, or booing before, during, or after each speaker. Please refrain from talking in the audience during the meeting. A copy of any supporting documents referenced during the meeting must be provided to the city clerk. His documents will become part of the permanent record and will be retained by the clerk's office. The citizens' comments portion of the meeting is not intended to be a question and answer session. This is for citizen comments only. And council members should refrain from answering impromptu questions or debating issues with members of the public. With that, we will open up the floor.
Hello. My name is Katie Abs. I live in Punta Gorda Isles. I would like to thank the Police Department and the Fire Department for doing such a great job of keeping everybody safe. And also a big thank you to those who are working behind the scenes. I really want to thank the sanitation department. We had multiple houses on our street that got water in the houses and in the garages. So there was a lot of debris out. I threw out some of my husband's stuff that he doesn't know is gone yet. Some of his clothes and what have you. But anyway, so I went out to the end of the driveway when the, when the, you know, garbage trucks came and I was helping them, you know, put the, you know, bags in the truck and everything along with some of the neighbors. They were in my neighborhood till 7:30 at night and they probably didn't go home after that. So, so they don't. But I also have a question on your meeting today. You have 5A and 5B where you are rewriting the ordinances. Can that wait? I know I'm busy cleaning out, helping neighbors and everything else. I know people have not had a time. I don't know how you all would have even had a time to review everything. This is rewriting ordinances. One of them is rewriting the entire chapter. I don't understand what the reason might be. And hopefully, you might, you know, postpone it when it comes to that time in the agenda. Thank you very much for listening.
Hi, Jeff Lustig here. Recently, at a county commissioners' meeting, there was a group of individuals who were against Amendment Four and they believed that it was murder to kill an unborn child. And if I believed in that opinion, I respect that opinion very much. If I believed that, I would do everything in my power to prevent that from happening. However, with that comes a dangerous question. Should women who have had, should women who have had an abortion be charged with murder? Now you think, oh, that's really extreme of me to say that. Fortunately, in Georgia, they have granted personhood under the Life Act. And it shall be the policy of the state of Georgia to recognize unborn children as natural persons. It defines a natural person, a thin human being, including an unborn child, and defines an unborn child as a member of the species of Homo sapiens at any stage of development who is carried in the womb. There are district attorneys who are now going to prosecute women based on that. They already do for drug crimes. They give extra special penalties for people who have that. So I'm just giving you a warning that if, that if you admit to having had an abortion, there's no time limit on whether or not you could be charged with a crime. And it's something really to think about. And I think we really do need Amendment Four to protect women's rights so that they're not prosecuted and that they can get proper healthcare without doctors being afraid. But if you do believe that it's murder, then you should stand up and fight for that and then have to accept the consequences. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
Well, good morning, City Council. Everybody in the room today. Hurricane Debbie was pretty awful. Tim Ritchie, resident of Punta Gorda. Hurricane Debbie was pretty bad. Then we had Hurricane Helene. Now we've all just experienced Hurricane Milton. And I do want to thank our Police Department and our Fire Department and everybody who has stepped up to help our community because it's pretty, pretty depressing and sad to look at everybody's belongings in the historic district, down across from Dunkin Donuts, even in my neighborhood, parts of PGI. We did not have the burning of all the plants with Debbie and Helene. My house looks like a bomb was dropped. And I want you all to understand that Mosaic put a release out with Reuters that they released 17,500 gallons from Mosaic River View. That's up in Tampa. They put a notice out with FDEP on the 15th. They didn't put how many gallons, but they discharged water from Mosaic Fort Mead, which is on the Peace River. They have outfalls there. And on my way home with my beautiful girlfriend and my beautiful mother and my little beautiful doggy Luna, I called Jackie Maroon on Saturday morning on her cell phone and she answered. And if you don't know who Jackie is, you should look into it. But immediately, when she said, who is this? I said, hi Jackie, it's Tim Ritchie. Hi, Tim. But I have yet to get the call back. We have yet to get the amount of gallons released for Mosaic Green Bay and Mosaic Barto. And I want every single resident in the city of Punta Gorda and Charlotte County, any of you who have water, standing up to your front door like I did. That's Mosaic blending acidic wastewater filled with raw sewage. I want you to get a gallon of water, a couple capfuls of bleach. Clean your pool patio. Clean your driveway off. Clean your floors in your house. We need to know, and I'm going to ask each one of you. I want you to contact Mosaic today in FDEP, John Coats at FDEP. Thank you. We need to know the millions of gallons discharged.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
Wendy Trotta. Thank you, Council, for your time. I am a tenant of Herald Court. I am a local. I have been a tenant for five years. I am coming for help. At this time, it is becoming very difficult to look around downtown and see business owners already installing their new drywall, getting their businesses ready for reopening. And here I am, almost four weeks in. I have mold growing throughout my whole establishment. I had to sit and watch my establishment, sit with standing water and mud because barriers were left up for almost three days. I'm just coming for help. We need to come together as a community to make changes, to change protocols, to have better communication and clarity. The only communication we've gotten from the city on paper is a letter from the attorney. First storm dawn from facilities stated that the city was going to be taking care of remediation and drywall. Then we get a letter saying that now it's our responsibility. Here we are, another storm. And can I mention also that I actually picked up human waste from my establishment during that first storm? I know that there was water testing done in Herald Court. We would like to see the results of that testing. We need to know what was in that water, what were we standing in? The few things that we thought we were gonna save or were able to save, is it even safe to use that? We deserve to know as tenants. We're going to you guys because you guys are our landlord. The city is our landlord. Everybody else's landlords are doing a wonderful job. And I know it is a big, it is a big problem that we have and we're a very small part of the downtown area, but downtown do get it the worst, just as that gentleman stated. The drying machines from Blue Sky, every time I stop by, they're not running. I have to go chase down people that are working for Blue Sky to ask them to please get them back up and running. And like I said, I have mold growing. It's time to get the drywall out. We're just asking for clarity and communication. How do we move forward? How do we protect our businesses? Why were the flood barriers not sealed? A lot of us picked that building because it was basically supposed to be hurricane-proof and flood-proof. And none of these things are true at the moment. How do we protect our businesses in the future if we do rebuild? How do we make sure that we don't get flood? If I seal my unit, but my neighbor doesn't, I still get water? I'd like for us to come together and come up with solutions to move forward and get things fixed.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
Hello, my name is Wendy Kirdray in the PGI. I was just wondering if we're ever gonna form a flood mitigation committee? I mean, it's obviously that we have to talk about the future. I mean, basically, there's things, ideas that I have that could be, you know, talked about. I'm sure the whole community would like to talk about what we could do to stop this. Please consider this and give it good thought. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
Good morning. My name is Patty Herndon. I am also one of the tenants of Herald Court. We, for the last month, have been trying very hard to get our businesses up and running. We have been trying to communicate with the city. As Wendy said, we are your tenants. We need help. We have eight businesses that are in this location. I own three of them. At this point, I have three businesses that are failing because I cannot get back in there. I cannot fix what needs to be fixed. I have to replace a tremendous amount of equipment and food. And I have over 20 employees that I employ that also do not have a job at the moment. We are in trouble. We need the help. We need to make sure that we are supporting each other and we have got to get Herald Court back up and running. I urge you, please, help us. Help us help our city. We love being downtown. We are downtown because we were asked to be downtown. We want to support downtown. At this point, you have eight businesses that are going underwater, literally. Please, we absolutely need your help. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Leonard Vigiano. I'm one of the owners of the Refinery Market in Herald Court. And I just want to reiterate what Patty and Wendy said, that we are in desperate need for help. We love this little community. We feel like we're out there on our own. And we are just urging you to help us as much as you can.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
Good morning. Wendy Mueller. I had a lot of things I wanted to say, but I've just heard heartbreaking. You sent a letter to take care of their property, but you had reassured them that you were gonna take care of them. You sit here and you give yourself accolades once again. You sit here and you give yourself accolades once again. It's like getting awards and going off to Colorado or wherever. You went, "What a wonderful group of people you must be. I cannot wait until you're elected."
Good morning. My name's Steve Murphy. It's more of a question, I know I'm not supposed to ask him, or a comment. During Ian, you opened up a dump site on, right by the recreational park. And I was hoping that you would open it up again so that residents can take our garbage and not have to wait weeks' work to get thrown away and just haul and try to help you guys out. That's my question, comment. Thanks.
If you would, our Public Works Director might be able to talk to you about that. I believe that was the county that opened the dump site and we can find out if they're going to do that again, certainly, but we're going to be able to help you with that.
Hello, my name's Shania Richardson. I too am a tenant of Harold Court. My husband and I, Lee, own Gordables as well as Levois Downtown. And I'm in the same position as Patty, Leo, Wendy. Our landlord at Levois has been more than accommodating and has gone above and beyond and was in our establishment within the first six hours after the storm, has done drywall, floors, not once, but twice for us. My establishment at Gordables is a different story. Unfortunately, I am still waiting, waiting for any answers, any communication. I have employees as well that are reliant on this. My business is at a complete standstill. Not only did we lose everything we had, but now I can't even get answers. And we would just like some sort of communication, some help, get us up and running. We love downtown. Downtown is the heartbeat of Pontegora. Small businesses are what we need, what we want, what we want to thrive downtown and we need help. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel?
My name is Lisa Schmull and I am also a Harold Court tenant. I am one of the original Harold Court tenants. I've been in the establishment for 11 years. I understand the severity of the situation that we are in and I realize that the city of Pontegora is probably not used to being a tenant relationship because I've heard this from numerous people that, well, that's an odd situation, the city is your tenant, but we have lease agreements and we have insurance people and we have a lot of things that we have to go through. There are certain steps and I understand that other people are being addressed faster, if you will. And I wouldn't say that per se I'm here for help, but again, clarity because this situation seems to be put slightly in our perception upon the back burner, which these people behind me, we are like one family because each one of those units does connect and form one place. And yes, when one place leaks, the other one inundates with water. And we did our due diligence and our best after Helene to eradicate and save everything humanly possible. But the second blow is, we would prefer that it not be the final blow. We enjoy our community. I enjoy my clients. I miss getting a cup of coffee. I miss grabbing a Gordable. And I'm sure the ladies miss getting their hair done next door. All we're asking for is clarity in the lease agreement and the responsibility thereof either upon us or upon our landlord because we can't take walls with us when we leave. So we're also not allowed to damage walls because they don't belong to us. So the question lies in, what are we doing? Is the city going to remediate the building according to the lease agreement or is it on us? All we are is confused tenants and we are part of the heart of downtown. And I'm sure, I saw people coming to Gordables not knowing it wasn't even there after Helene and having to, I had a person come in and ask me for a piercing when we had a wooden door up with electrical coming through to, there's air scrubbers in there, there are dehumidifier things in there and they are working. I've not personally experienced them, not working. So I see the effort. I, again, also see the struggle and it's varying degrees of struggle. So I know this is a weird time and a place to come forward with requests, but again, they just want clarity in their lease agreement and what the responsibility is of the Harold Court owners, which is the city. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel?
Couple things. Number one, what I was going to say before we started meeting. I personally wasn't aware that we only have this room till noon and I'm not willing to rush conversations or rush decisions based on what we have the room for. As far as I'm concerned, if we are going in order of things and we just don't get everything done, then we just don't get everything done. But I don't want to feel like any of us are rushed to make a decision. But now that I've actually heard the tenants that have come forward, I know it's not on the agenda, but I'm going to say I would like for us to address this right now. Let's have, you know, rebuttal, let's have whether it be we're going to get a meeting set up with the tenants right now after this meeting so we can get complete clarity before we leave this room.
I agree with our mayor. We've got to do something. What the hell are we doing even if it's in the landlord business? We've got to give this something else. This is crazy. We've got to give them an answer. We've got to do it today. And I don't care if we get rid of the rest of the agenda or not. We've got to get this done.
That was my issue this morning that I was trying to say. We have more happening here in our community that we are ignoring and going about daily business and we need to take care of this stuff right now.
That's right. Yeah.
Well, the attorney can weigh in. We don't have an agenda item, specific decision making capability, but we are not ignoring anything. So I challenge that word because we certainly are not ignoring anything. And our risk mitigation, our attorney can talk about things that have happened, answers that have been given and people that have been on the ground talking, trying to make things happen, including our Blue Sky that's there now. But we do have a landlord-tenant agreement. We do have specific criteria of things we do and things that the landlord is responsible for. You go to the other businesses and you see exactly what is intended. The business owners are ripping out things that are damaged and replacing it in their business. So we can talk about our lease agreements. We can talk about what the requirements are. A lot of that's been relayed through a letter that most people did not like getting, but we can go over it again. We can meet with any time we want. We've had people there and we can discuss it again.
Well, the letter that was written was in response principally to threats of litigation. And the letter was intended to provide clarity with respect to the requirements of the lease as it relates to the mitigation and rehabilitation of things that were within the individual units that were clearly the responsibility of the tenants. What the letter did not go into in a great degree of detail and possibly that's a source of some confusion was the fact that the city does have the responsibility for dealing with that portion of the building that is outside of the individual units. And tenants are required pursuant to the lease to maintain insurance, to make sure that their contents, the things that they put into the unit to, whether they were the ones that actually fitted it out or whether the fit out was done by a previous tenant that they were the beneficiary of, they still have the obligation to deal with the things that are inside of their units. Just like I rent a, on behalf of our law firm, a unit in another commercial building downtown and those things that are inside my unit are my responsibility. I think that the city, and Jeff can talk about the actions that the city has taken with respect to that portion of the building that is clearly the city's responsibility. I think it's clear, or I tried to make clear in the letter, that, you know, if you have insurance, contact your insurance people and begin the work that anybody, whether they are homeowners, would have to do with respect to dealing with the damage and insurance. Tenants have the same responsibility with respect to the particular units. That's all I really have to say on the matter.
As far as remediation, mitigation?
Is that my gun? I think it's turned off.
Yeah, that's probably true. That's always my problem. So after Ian, if we go back a couple of years, right, we had roof leaks in Harold Court. And so the roof and roof leaks being our responsibility, we did drywall removal at that time. Now, as far as what I'm told with flooding, that flooding is not a landlord responsibility, but we have gone in, we've had all the dryers and everything in there to try and dry out all the flooding and get the muck out of there as much as we can, right? And then really, do we go beyond that step is the question, right? Is the city going to go in and tear out the drywall? Because the basic next steps would be look at the flooring, what flooring needs to come out, how much of the drywall needs to come out. Then you do additional drying for a couple of days before you can then start the repairs, which would be replacing flooring, replacing drywall, painting, you know, all those kind of things. Certainly with furniture and those kind of things, that's beyond any landlord responsibility. So we're really talking about walls and floor. They did have substantial amount of water in there. I'm told it was like 18 inches roughly in those units, which is considerable, right? And it was there for more than 24 hours, right? So if you walk through those units, the damage is clearly visible, okay? And so Blue Sky has been on site since the storm. They've had those dryers in there. I have seen them at least once, not working because the generators were out of fuel and they had to wait on a fuel truck to come and refuel the generators. So I don't know how many times they've been working and not working, okay? That's kind of the status of where we are right now.
On the first storm, the flood panels put up.
For Helene, no, the storm panels were not.
So whose responsibility is that, ours or the tenants?
Put up the panels?
Actually, there's a section in the lease, I believe it's section 47, that says if there's adequate warning and there's a main mitigation that's required, we would put them up. But it says that it's not required to be put up every time and there should not be a reliance on that because just like the other businesses down down, no one knew that Helene was going to have that kind of surge and they also did not put up flood panels because there wasn't adequate warning. Flood panels that we have are intended to prevent damage. As far as debris, you can see that even not just our building, but others down down, the flood panels were up and they still flooded. They're not going to prevent flooding like it's going to be a sealed unit. They just don't do that. So yes, they were up this time, but still flooded worse than last time. But for Helene, no, they were not, just like Debbie, they were not a value, they were not. Ian, they were. When there's a direct hit, we're noon mitigation and we have adequate warning, then they go up. And that's what our Public Works relies on.
You know, I understand all of that, but they need help, pure and simple. And I don't see any reason in this world why we don't send some people down there right now today to help them. I'm willing to go and change clothes. I'll get down there and do whatever to get it done. It just needs to get out of, I don't want to hear legalities, I don't want to hear my attorney. I want to have something done for those people today. You've got to do something.
May I ask you a question? So have the floors been removed in the driveway? I think that's, to me, a problem because, yeah, because I know I rent a building for a business and, you know, probably, I mean, don't get me wrong, it took them 72 hours or so. I mean, I get that, it's not going to be overnight. But they've already been in there to, you know, rip out walls and floors. I think that's a start. That's what we need to do. I think the next thing is that if any tenants are here still or watching, that they need to reach out, we need to have one point of contact for them to reach out to and you can have a meeting with them all together. And if the walls and the drywall has not come out, that needs to be done today, period.
So there's two things to that. Certainly when we had wind damage from Ian and the rain came in from the top, the drywall came out because that was a landlord responsibility. Under this condition and the lease terms, it is the business owner's responsibility to mitigate the damage in the unit. If you want the city to take on the responsibility and pay the cost to do that, we will do it. All you have to do is say so. But it is not the city's responsibility to do that under these conditions and under the lease agreement and the other businesses. You get down town and you see the other businesses and you will see that they are carrying out their drywall, they're replacing it as a business and that's the requirement. So again, we can only do what is legally allowable per the lease agreements. If you want to supersede that and say that the city should take on the cost and the responsibility of that, but bear in mind that that will make a contractual obligation, it will not happen immediately and of course, the city will bear the cost for that because we lease those as empty units and anything inside the unit, whether it came with it or not, that was, as the attorney said, that was a benefit to the person leasing it is the responsibility of the tenant because we're not, you know, full-service landlords. We lease the box. So if you want us to do that as counsel, counsel will have to direct that we supersede the conditions of the lease and that we will take on the responsibility, which will not be immediate, and the cost of doing that. And that's all that's required. We don't have the authority to do that unilaterally.
Well, I know you don't want to hear from the attorney, but I do want to put at least in some perspective so that you can make policy decisions that you want to make. When the city decided to become a landlord with respect to the fitting out of and design of the Harold Court Center, they initially had a management company to prepare the lease that the city ultimately has used with slight modification from time to time, but generally is the master lease that is, was adopted by the city to be imposed on any tenant. And of course, as is usually the case, when a lease is written by a landlord, it is intended to protect the landlord to the greatest extent possible to the detriment of the tenant. That's just the way it is. And the city adopted that, yeah, that lease, maybe not with complete understanding, but if you read it, you can see it's a landlord-directed lease. With respect to municipal-owned property as opposed to privately-owned property, it is the taxpayers that are ultimately intended to be protected in that lease as the owner of the property. That's why unfortunately or fortunately, I wrote my opinion based on the language in the lease, which appears somewhat odorous, but at the end of the day, it's intended to protect the taxpayers. Now, as the city council, you have the ability to do whatever you wish to do as it relates to the tenants. I'm just simply telling you that the lease is what it is and it is intended to do what it says it's intended to do. And tenants are, when they sign a lease, are presumed to understand who has the respective responsibilities and obligations under that lease. So that's what the law and legal position is, but you are the policymakers.
And I think that, and that probably right there is the confusing part because I think every building that I've ever rented, I know that if something happens, then realistically from the walls and everything is going to be taken care of by the landlord. So, okay, so what clarity we've gotten today is the fact that, you know, municipalities have that own buildings do things a little different, okay? And I think that we've also just, this is something new that we've come across that we haven't had to deal with. So, now that we're having this conversation, I think that, I don't know legally what we can do today, but I think we need to move forward. I personally would like to see that in this scenario, that the city needs to bear the responsibility of getting those drywalls out and the floors at least. Once we get that taken care of, and, you know, get, stop the bleeding, as they say, going forward, maybe we need to look at these contractual leases, or have a better understanding of them, et cetera, et cetera. But here's where we're at right now, and I would personally like to see that done.
My concern is that we can't do it immediately. I mean, we can't get, we can't get it cleaned out immediately, that's my concern.
Debbie, start the process.
I keep on hearing our tenants, and I think they should have the ability to talk again, because this is theirs, but I've heard them saying they can't touch the walls, you know, it's been in their leases, they can't touch. I bet they're willing to take out the walls and take out the floors, just like us as homeowners have been doing as well. I mean, give them a chance, it's not city money. But I bet there's probably a great working relationship we can have with the tenants, maybe not having the city take full responsibility, but working together is what I'm understanding. And I'd like to hear the tenants talk some more and discuss what we've just been discussing.
Well, the lease is very clear in that regard, and that is that the tenants do have the responsibility to take out the drywall within their units and do whatever, whatever's necessary to qualify, whatever's necessary to qualify them for whatever insurance that they may have to protect the contents and, and the contents of the unit for reimbursement from the insurance company. So that's, you know, that's really what, what the lease says with respect to the abilities and responsibilities of the individual tenants.
Can we get a copy, please? Do we have copy?
Do we want to continue with citizen comments if there's any other tenants?
I mean, it sounds like at this point, we know, we know it was in the contract, it may or may not be understood. We want to try to get our businesses back, so what do we need to do to mitigate? I think that's a great idea, would the tenants like to go ahead and take the drywall, if they have the capability, if they don't? And I don't know that that necessarily needs to be at this meeting. I would like that the tenants go talk to, you know, maybe Melissa, sorry, just saying, you know, moves to Melissa and says, okay, here, I'm tenant A, and I have the ability to take the drywall and floor out on tenant B, I don't. And they try to work that out amongst themselves, but at least be able to autonomy to do it.
Risk management, which is Courtney and Jeff have been handling this, they've been working with Blue Sky, they're the ones that do that. What was asked for was clarity as to what the interpretation of the lease says. And that is the clarity of what the interpretation of the lease says. Now, what you want to override in that lease, or what you want to reiterate, is completely up to council. But if, if we're going to get into the business of doing that, then we should, you know, do it completely, not try to, you know, do it halfway.
My opinion is it's our asset, and I think we have a responsibility to fix our asset. And it needs to be universally done the same for all the units, so that we have continuity throughout the building. That's my personal.
We agree.
So what do we have to do?
I think we have to make a decision and have a motion that the city will take on the responsibility.
Consensus, it's not that different.
Okay, so I'm going to, I apologize. So a consensus that the city will take on the responsibility of doing the clean out, and then as we work through that process, we can decide how it's got to go from that point forward. And Jeff, we can leave that in your hands to meet with the tenants and work out an amicable plan for everybody.
Well, Blue Sky would be involved in going.
Blue Sky would be doing the work, right? They're already contracted with them. They would love to get in, do the demolition, remove all the stuff that they tear out, and then do the repairs.
Okay, these tenants have to get back to business, they can't be losing this revenue. The sooner the better. As far as I'm concerned, if we have to have an emergency meeting to pass an emergency ordinance, whatever it takes, let's get it done. I support this whole group of tenants a hundred percent. We have to keep our downtown businesses in place, we don't want to lose any of our businesses downtown. I totally sympathize with all you guys, and if I were a tenant, I'd be standing there screaming too. So that's my opinion. Anybody disagree with me?
No.
We have consensus.
Sorry?
Can I just ask a question? All right, so I totally agree with, you know, injecting ourselves into this crisis now. I guess what I'm wondering, does this alter the contract going forward? I mean, is this mean?
Well, if I can, the, the lease provides for rights and responsibilities. But if you want to do more than what the, what the lease provides in terms of the city's liability and obligation, you have the ability to do that. And the only, you know, theoretically speaking, the only risk is that somebody's going to file a taxpayers' lawsuit to suggest that you've used city funds for personal, private purposes. So whatever, to the extent you feel like there's a very low risk in that happening, then you certainly can take the action, and it sounds like a wish you'd take.
I think, I think we have consensus, a hundred percent, if we want to do something for these folks.
And what we've said is if you don't need the special meeting, an emergency meeting, anything else, if you have consensus that you want to supersede the conditions in the lease, then we will take that as direction, and we'll get Blue Sky involved and, involved more heavily, and we'll work on the process.
And I don't think we can wait two or three or four weeks. We need to get that drywall out of there before the buildings are completely infested with mold everywhere.
We will have to do it on their schedule.
We will, we'll make it a priority though, all right, so I'll get an ASAP.
Okay. Everybody's good with that? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, isn't it?
I think, I think they want to talk, just, just a couple minutes, and then...
Just a minute.
Yes.
I was going to say something about the meeting, but you have to decide.
Yeah, let them have a couple more minutes.
Okay, let's keep it brief, please.
Okay, so first of all, I want to thank all of you for...
Your name for the record.
Wendy Charada. I want to thank all of you for this, for leading to move forward. And for Mr. David Lemon, you state that we lease a box, and I completely understand that, and I understand everything inside is my responsibility. However, I do not have a safe and secure box. I had a weekend during Ian, and it was all put on my responsibility, my drywall came out. I don't have a roof to fix. I have water intrusion because the building is not sealed correctly. When I filed for insurance, they told me no, because they said it's negligence on the building. So I got nothing. I still had that damage in my establishment, I still do today, I could go show you. When we call about flooding, were the barriers put up? No, they weren't. And I understand, none of us knew that Helene was going to do what it did. But guess what, insurance says negligence. So please do not sit here and say that it's all on our insurance, when we tried, we have tried. And as far as drywall, give us the green light. I believe between all of us tenants, we could have it all done within two days. Take it off of our rent.
I don't want to get involved in whatever discussions you're having with your insurance and insurance.
Right, but I don't have a secure box, that's all I'm saying.
Again, the obligation of the city with respect to the flood panels was that if there was any flooding as a result of the failure to put the flood panels up, by the terms of the agreement, it is only if the city was grossly negligent in failing to put those up, under the circumstances, and that, that ultimately might have to be decided in a court of law. But ultimately, under the circumstances, simple negligence was not the standard. And under the circumstances, given the fact that we've been through a number of storms, we've been through predictions with respect to storm surge, and the design of those panels was intended to be flood-safe. The question is whether the city was negligent, grossly negligent, in not putting those panels up that resulted in the flood damage. So, again, you're hearing the city council wanting to be assisting in you.
Yes, I'm very thankful for that.
But understand, you know, my letter was addressed to someone who is making a claim against the city for failure to do its duty, and my, among other things, the letter was intended to protect the city and the taxpayers of the city for not violating the terms of the lease agreement that the tenants signed. But again, that's a lawyer talking, you don't want to hear any more from the attorney.
I do want to thank all of you for making this happen. I'm looking forward to all of us moving forward and getting our businesses up and running, so thank you.
Yeah, somebody else who wants to speak?
I will mention, too, that we did prioritize Herald Court Center as far as getting the muck and the bricks and the sidewalks cleaned, as well as all the debris that was around there. Sunday, the debris was removed, and all the sidewalks and everything outside of the building was completely cleaned by a separate contractor.
Good morning, Jen, my name is Leonard Vigiano, and who David is talking about is me. I'm the tenant he's talking about, if I may recall. We sent that letter three days after the event. No contact whatsoever from the city, no one whatsoever. Yes, my wife and I have our business sold, the people that were going to buy it are devastated right now. And then, two days after that, our first correspondence is a letter from an attorney. Like, what the heck? Right? Why wasn't the letter initially after Helene, one day after the event, like, hey, guys, we're all in this together, I'm really sorry for your loss, how can we help? No? So my wife and I decided, because we had, there's multiple parties that were involved in our deal. They're devastated, they're really devastated. We were on dock, we were on October 2nd, to have the lease transferred, obviously, and it did not go through. So we thought it was the best, we're going to send some correspondence. And then we get a, we get a letter from an attorney that has twenty-eight names on the side of it. Wow, that's really awesome, isn't it? That's really, really awesome. We're just small business people, trying to make a living, trying to make this community a little bit better, and that's what we get. And now, in my previous life, I was an industrial high-chance. What that means is you deal with mold. I was in the University of Delaware, up in the state of Delaware, I was their mold, asbestos, and lead-based paint person. You guys better get some testing in there before you start sending people to rip out drywalls, because there is mold issues. Now, obviously, we need to test it, to confirm if it's a stacubotrys, or whatever type of mold is in there, to decide what type of remediation program would be necessary. That could involve setting that unit under negative pressure, providing fresh air coming in, have the filtration coming out, it all depends on what the condition is. So, again, I, you know, I just wanted to address it, because, you know, I think it's fair that everyone should know, put a face, who was, that person that sent the letter was made an email. And I just wanted to give my response to why we did it, when we sent it, and then what happened two days later, nothing from the city, from an attorney, it has twenty-eight people in their letterhead.
Okay, folks, since we have a very short timeframe that we have this room today, with all people left, well, there are things that have to be...
They have to be done today.
All right.
I understand, coming from an attorney's perspective, and you guys as a landlord, however, you tell us it's our responsibility to protect our units. We don't have the ability to put up flood panels, we are not allowed to touch those, we are not allowed to do any of that. That is on your discretion, I understand, I understand they are not watertight perfect. However, my unit sustained damage from, I'm a corner unit, I have exterior doors on both sides, as well as floor drains. I have a six-minute video of sewage and whatever else was coming up through the floors that completely took over my unit. How am I responsible for that? How do I stop that? There is nothing, nothing that I could have done to save anything. I was intruded by water from both doors and sewage from both areas of my building. I'm a food establishment. How, how do you protect that? There's nothing that I could have physically done. When I contacted my insurance, they told me it's your responsibility. That's on the city. How do, what do I do? I am left with absolutely nothing. I've lost everything that I put into that. Not only my blood, sweat, and tears, my time, but monetarily, everything. And I'm in a spot where I'm, I'm told that there's nothing that can be done. So moving forward, as my landlord, what do we do to stop that? Because it happened twice. It happened with Helene and Milton both. I have sewage in my building. I've not been given test results, I know they were taken. I know that there was things done to test what was in our establishments, our buildings, and we've been given no answers. There's got to be something, because you can't tell us that it's our responsibility, our responsibility solely, to take care of that building, when we have not been given any tools to do it. Those are tools that are on you. What, what do we do?
And I think we've all agreed with all of you. I mean, we have consensus from the council that we want to address this for you and get, get the city to do the, to get the mitigation done that needs to be done. So I think...
With sewage, though.
Well, we can talk to you about that, that actually, there's a whole different thing there. Because all the valves on the sewer lines into the units were closed prior to the storm, so that nothing could back up from the sewer pipes, but I can tell you what it was, and we can talk to our utilities and everyone else about that.
I mean, there's just something that, there's things that...
You have to be at the podium if you're going to speak, I'm sorry.
We have...
I'm just addressing, there, those are things that we cannot prevent. I cannot go into the city's utilities to do anything to prevent that. So to deem me responsible for those, I, I mean, you've left me hanging, that there's nothing that I can do to protect myself from that.
Each one of our tenant situations is unique. The only thing I'm going to stand and say is, way back when, there was a build-out allowance. So every wall within my establishment, because I'm one of the original build-out tenants, was built, paid for, and is owned by the City of Pontegora. I have done no remediations, no changes. Every time I look at a wall, I'm like, this belongs to the City of Pontegora. And each of them have alternate remediations, because different tenants have swept in. So what I'm seeing and hearing is different case scenarios, all within the same structure. And all of our lease agreements tend to have little bits of this and that. You're responsible for your AC, you are not responsible, you're responsible for this. For instance, I do not have a sewer drain, so I did not see, or was not aware of, sewer backing up within my unit. So that's going to be one thing that is not happening in my establishment, that was happening in her establishment. If you guys address this, this is just, I'm just a tenant. I feel like there needs to be a complete overhaul of our lease agreement, and a requirement of insurance, because of my insurance adjuster was there, and I do expect that I'm just going to hear no, because it was a flood, or no, because it was wind, because I heard no for Irma, I heard no for Ian, I just hear no, 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 no. So we're just asking, if we get ourselves together, if you guys choose to help us, and we all come back, and we're all in business, and we get downtown back and going, when the next one hits, is I think what she's driving at, is how do we have a written guarantee that you're going to do something to prevent future sewage from inundating your business, from, from water? Just where do we go from here? So if you assume responsibility, or you're trying to put it upon us, we can't do anything if our insurance has then failed us. So it looks as if like FEMA says no, because you, we do not pay for content on a business. Okay, and then the insurance says no, because it's a flood. But then, as a municipality, you guys are receiving FEMA money, at least, this is what I'm being told, and I could be actually incorrect, you are receiving monies from the government for remediation of your place. So we are just asking that you choose to remediate and get us back to our standing. No one's asking you to pay for tattoo chairs, or for, or for ice machines, or whatever, that is content, we understand content. We're talking about the structure of the building. And to say that you're only responsible for the outside, I don't understand. Having finally had a fully loaded Herald Court since 2019, where everybody's up and running, good to go, yay, that you want to just throw those lease agreements away and all the future monetary income that could come back into the city from all of us? So I'm going to stop talking, because I'm taking up time. But each individual situation is unique and individual, and some can afford more than others, some have been there longer than others, but this OG, I still have your original build-out from your, your lease agreement. So you technically own all the walls that I work within. So I really, really appreciate, and I do hear everybody wanting to aid in the removal. But I also agree with the, the mold thing. We can't be tearing things down without N95s on and getting future diseases, because we're in and working around things that we don't understand.
And to that staff, we will have the city staff work with you all, and we'll get something going as soon as possible.
Okay. And the remediation company, I mean, that's what they do, but that's what they do, so...
Yeah, they're more responsible than we are, because we don't know all the things they know. It wants to be done, if you want your building to be built back right. It wants to be done, if you want your building to be built back right.
Then you need to choose who builds it back right.
Okay. Everybody's okay with this?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Payne, we'll leave it in your trusty hands. And please give a report back to the next council lady. Okay?
Before we take the break, I wanted to address the meeting itself. Because there have been a lot of comments about, should we have had the meeting? Who scheduled the meeting? And I said yesterday that this meeting scheduled was my fault because I had things on the agenda. And the reason there's things on the agenda is because twice we've spent money on public hearings for two items. 5A, 5B were given to City Council on September 25th to review, three weeks ago. And we have these that have been advertised, and we have to have the public hearings so that they know if we're not going to discuss them, then it's moved to another meeting. That's great. We really care one way or another, except that statutory requirements, especially for one, say, October 1st, and we're already well past that deadline. So, the meeting itself is not scheduled by me, is not scheduled by me. The meeting is scheduled by City Council, by 5-0 vote. And according to the charter where it said they would, the City Council would have regular meetings, not special meetings, not emergency meetings. It says regular meetings according to your policies and your rules. City Council identified the days that there were going to be regular meetings. Today was one of those days. So, City Council scheduled this meeting. Anything I can do is if we don't have staff to have a meeting or say place, I can cancel one, like we canceled the last one. I did not schedule this one. We scheduled items on the agenda for this one. And if City Council doesn't want to have a meeting, they can contact us and say, we do not want to have a meeting. None of which occurred. So, we have a regularly scheduled meeting today. We put hurricane items on the agenda first so that we have plenty of time for those. We took other things off the agenda so that we would not encumber anyone with things that were in the proclamations and different things so that we could identify and address the hurricane issues first. Whatever time we have left, we'll continue to address the other issues. If we don't get to the public hearings that have been advertised and we don't make those deadlines, we'll defer that to another meeting. But to say we shouldn't have a meeting, Council scheduled this meeting. It's a regularly scheduled meeting of Council. And if Council doesn't want to have a meeting, they can cancel a meeting. But we still need to have regularly scheduled meetings and do business. Because right now, there's items where we have people waiting to sell houses that they cannot do because we haven't had this on the agenda for a month and a half where we accept infrastructure that they can then connect to. So, there are items of business within the city that have to continue regardless of the outside damage that we're trying to mitigate. Hurricane items first, and that's exactly what we did. Other items by priority on the agenda. If we get to it, we get to it. If we don't, we don't. But if Council wants to change course, cancel the regularly scheduled meetings that they've approved. They certainly have the latitude to do that as well. But we still have regular business to accomplish along that. So, that's what I wanted to clarify about the meeting.
We'll press forward, and we'll try to get through as much of this as we can. At this point, we will adjourn as the City Council and reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, let's do that. We'll, we'll take a five-minute break. Uh, we'll come back at 10:00. Let's just say 11 o'clock. Is everyone seated again? Is anything going to restart?
The meeting's starting.
Okay. Uh, at this point in time, we will adjourn as City Council and reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. And first, we have a resolution.
Yes, and let me give a brief predicate to this. Actually, currently, the leases that the tenants have at the Herald Court Center are not with the City of Punta Gorda, but with the City of Punta Gorda Community Redevelopment Agency. And the purpose of the resolution that I'm about to present is to transfer all the city, all of the CRA's assets to the City Council. And technically speaking, the consensus that you took a few minutes ago with respect to what the city is going to do to help the tenants was not at that time properly considered by the City Council because it was a matter of ownership by the CRA, which is now defunct. But notwithstanding, um, under the, under statutes, the, the, a corporation that's been dissolved still has certain residual abilities, one of which is to adopt the resolution that I'm about to read by title only, allowing it to transfer the remaining assets to another corporation, in this case, a municipal corporation. So, after we do what we're about to do in this resolution, and the City Council adopts the resolution that's on the City Council agenda, you might want to simply reiterate the consensus that was taken for the record as the City Council. Got a lead?
So, when do you want me to do that?
When, I'll let you, I'll give you a heads up.
Okay.
All right. So, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, and of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Punta Gorda, transferring all rights, title, and interests of said agency in all real and personal property, including leases of said property, to the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Okay. So, based upon our just previous conversation before our break, it was decided that the city...
Don't be, you can discuss that. We're not, we're not there yet. Just, just if, if we can get a motion to, to approve the resolution or by this, by this Community Redevelopment Agency, that's where we're at the moment.
Okay.
Move to approve 4A. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item 4A. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Nope.
Okay. Uh, so with that, we are adjourned as the Community Redevelopment Agency, and we'll reconvene as City Council.
All right. With respect to the two items on, on the agenda, both of which are legislated, the urgency associated with these two ordinances is that there are legislatively mandated obligations of the city to take actions. And that's why these were originally on an earlier City Council agenda. I, I would not have a problem if the City Council decided to open the, the public hearings on each of these two first readings and then continue the public hearings to the next City Council meeting so that the other items on the agenda would have time for consideration. And the reason why I'm, I'm not worried about the deadlines is that I believe that the attorney, that the governor's executive orders as it relates to hurricane emergency would suspend the particular deadlines that mandated that we consider these sooner than later. So, um, my recommendation would be to open the public hearings on each of these two and continue them to a date certain, so that it would not need to be re-advertished. If, if that's the consensus of the council. Okay.
So, first, we have GA-10-2024.
This is the first reading in ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code Chapter 15, offenses and miscellaneous provisions, Section 15-1 definitions, adding a new subsection J defining camping and use, and using Reserve Section 15-2 to prohibit camping on publicly-owned property, providing for conflict and separability, and providing an effective date. So, now would be the opportunity to entertain a motion for continuing this hearing until a date certain.
So moved. Second.
Well, the date certain would be the next...
November 6th.
November 6th City Council meeting.
So moved, or should I say that?
That's correct.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue Agenda Item 5A, which is GA-10-2024, to a date certain of November 6, 2024. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have ZA-02-2024.
Yes, this too is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 20A Punta Gorda Code in its entirety, adopting and setting forth rules and regulations governing the platting of land into subdivisions in the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, requiring subdivision procedures to comply with Section 177.073 Florida statutes, providing for compliance, providing for conflict and separability, and providing an effective date.
And once again, um, the, oh, the hearing is continued, or excuse me, is considered open, and we should have a motion to continue to a date certain.
Motion to continue to the next date, which is November 6th?
Six, yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue Agenda Item 5B, which is ZA-02-2024, to a date certain of November 6, 2024. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have a resolution, Agenda Item 6A.
Yes, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, and of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Punta Gorda, transferring all rights, title, and interests said agency and all real and personal property, including leases of said property, to the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, and providing an effective date.
And this is the second half of the transfer of all the lease agreements and titles and interests of the CRA...
Correct.
On the part of the City Council.
Correct.
Move to approve 6A?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item 6A. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, so now, so now, the City Council is the landlord of the Herald Court Center property. Reaffirming the consensus that was previously just made would be the, the activity at this time.
Okay, so, at this time, we will reaffirm that the City Council has given direction to city staff to enter into discussions with all of the tenants of the Herald Court parking garage area and work with the tenants to mitigate the, the flooding damage to their units.
Agreed.
Second. Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, it's on the...
If I can just make a comment, government's very detailed and process-driven. And what you just did is exactly the process that needed to happen for the public hearings and for this. I'm much more comfortable with that now. Thank you for doing that. But that is the process and why we had to do this today.
Okay. And I think everybody's very comfortable with it. And I'm glad we can at least try to be helpful with the tenants.
Yep.
We do want to keep them there. Okay. We have Agenda Item 6B, which is another resolution.
Yes, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, accepting a bill of sale, release of liens, affidavit of no liens from North Leaf Community Development District, and utility easements and warranty from VFKL Seagrass LLC for water and wastewater facilities at a development known as Seagrass Phase 1, providing for conflict and separability, and providing an effective date.
And as is customary, when we have a new housing development that comes online and they are part of our utility service area, they deed their water and sewer facilities to the city once it, it's all in place and established. And this is just deeding it to the city for the city to maintain it perpetuity. It will comply with all federal, state, and city code and, and zoning requirements.
Melissa? I had a couple of questions, um, I'd like to answer. In the actual bill of sale, under the Seagrass Phase Utilities, there's a mention of a discredited equipments. I'm sorry, that's the last one. Located within or upon the right-of-way design is track A1, and it says private roadway. I'm just wondering, what, what is that private roadway, when it references that?
Well, they're a CCG, that, they were the ones that set up that community...
So, it's going to be...
Or CCG, I'm sorry. Community Development District.
So, it will be considered private?
Their roads are private, and they will maintain their roads in perpetuity.
Okay. So, then, the other question I had, and moving on, it said, um... Oh, tracks A2 and A3 district roadway. So, it was just, I knew the private roadway because they were CDB. But was this district roadway? I just wasn't 100% sure with that.
So, so I'm not sure what the question is?
What is a district roadway as opposed to private?
It's the community development district.
So, the roads are all the community development district responsibility?
So, it's just kind of, so they're all private roadways, considering they're in their own district then?
District, correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I had a comment from somebody that said it would be nice that, um, when we have presentations like this, to just kind of show the map again as to, you know, where it was going to be, instead of having to... I know it was on previous ones, but it would just be kind of nice to include that, so...
And it's valid, yeah.
That was it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve 6B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item 6B. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have 6C, a resolution.
Yes, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, authorizing the city manager and department directors to submit grant applications that do not exceed a local match of 50%, authorizing execution of the application, and providing an effective date. This matter was previously before you, with a different percentage match limitation, and the City Council directed that the resolution be modified to reflect authorization for up to 50%. And were two incorporated into one? Yes.
Right. And also, that it still will come to City Council for approval of the grant warrants received?
For acceptance.
For acceptance, yes.
I, I have a question. So, it was brought up that streamline the process was great. I know I've already asked once before, and I'll just reiterate the fact that we wouldn't necessarily be in danger of losing grants if, for some reason, we applied for a grant and it comes to City Council, we say no, and then you go back, you know, let's say we won the grant, we go back and say, no, we're not ready to do that, that it wouldn't necessarily affect us for future grants. And I think your response was, no, probably not, most, most likely not. That's still the case.
Richard, what, cool, grants coordinator for, for the record? No, it's not going to affect our ability to get grants in the future. It looks like we don't necessarily know what we're doing, but, um, things change, matters change, policies change, so the grants, um, managers in the, the grantee's office, the, the funding agents will understand.
Well, and then I...
So, there won't be any, there won't be any negative consequences, Chris.
And that just leads me to my second and final point, is, again, it was brought to my attention just to make sure that, and I don't, I'm sure this isn't the way, but it was asked for protocol. It's not going to be anybody in any department saying, hey, I think this grant would be great because I want a new car, or I want this. It's going to be structured as opposed to what our priorities are, such as infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's more streamlined, and it's not going to be a bunch of people just putting asks out there.
It'll be the... I imagine it being the department directors and the city manager coming together, looking at the CIPs, knowing what your policy objectives are based upon the CIPs, and seeking the funding. And you're going to have the staff reports ahead of time anyhow. It just streamlines the process so that we don't have to wait for, um, wait for signatures in the future with council meetings, per se. Sometimes this speeds up the process by one.
And that's why we also ask that it all go through one office. Then, Melissa helps coordinate a lot of that along with our strategic priorities and our budgetary priorities, so that everyone understands what's being applied for its consistent across departments, and it's not a frivolous request.
They have fat trucks on the right-of-way, right?
Pardon?
We have fat trucks on the right-of-way, right?
Uh, there may be. If FEMA wants to pay for one, but, under certain...
That could happen too.
Yeah, that could happen.
An approval of item 6C?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item 6C. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we have 6D.
Yes, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, authorizing, oops, wrong one. There you go. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, accepting a bill of sale, release of liens, affidavit of no liens from North Star Verandas III Inc., and warranty from NSF, NS, NSBF LLC for water and wastewater facilities at a development known as the Verandas of Punta Gorda Phase III, providing for conflict and separability, and providing an effective date.
And this is for the new buildings being built at the Verandas, which is at Airport Road and on Grace Street? Need a motion?
Motion to accept, six D?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve agenda item six D. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we have six E.
Yes, this is a resolution, which I'll read by title only, a resolution of the City of Plundigorda, Florida, declaring its intent to vacate the south two hundred thirty-seven point oh three feet of Steadly Avenue formerly known as, mm, Duino Avenue, to the center line of Palmer Drive, and the remaining non-vacated portion of the north half of said Palmer Drive, extending to the southerly extension of the easterly line of Block K, according to the plat of La Plundig Park, recorded in Plat Book Two, page four, public records of Charlotte County, Florida, representing a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board, fixing a date of public hearing thereon, and providing effective date.
Good morning, Melissa Hagan, the planning director. This request came in from a representative of the Gettle Corporation for the car dealers. This resolution is the intent to vacate, not the vacation, it's not a public hearing, but as vacations go, there has to be a resolution to, of intent to vacate, that council will approve or deny that request. So staff had, like, in our small little staff report into the record, got a small presentation, but there are a couple of findings. The city owns and operates gravity sewer facilities within the described right-of-way. Approval of the request will cause the city to lose the right to use the right-of-way for public use, and to lose the right to maintain utility operations. The city owns and maintains stormwater drainage facilities within the described right-of-way. Approval of the request will cause the city to lose the right to use and maintain the right-of-way for public use, and to lose the right to use and maintain critical stormwater drainage facilities. Parcels north of the proposed vacation area drain to the south and require the maintenance and preservation of roadside swales, culvert pipes, and final discharge to the Seminole Gulf Railroad right-of-way located in this area. And based upon these findings outlined by utility and public works departments, urban design staff recommends denial of the street vacation request. So this would be up to city council, if you deny the intent to vacate, then it is a dead application, it will not move forward.
Comments?
I move to deny, six E.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny six E, which is the request for intent to vacate. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, we have the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from September eighteen, approval of the minutes from the budget hearing on September eighteen, approval of the minutes of the emergency meeting on September twenty fifth, and the invoice for person, co, and nominee. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull? If not, we need a motion, please.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, on to the regular agenda, we have one agenda item here, and that is the O'Kaven Development. Everybody talk at once.
Tom can go into a little more detail on this one as well, O'Kaven Development, the request for the extension of the service area. So basically, for context, if you go out Jones Loop, you go under Interstate seventy five, past McDonald's, which I know very well, and also past the seven eleven on the left-hand side, right on the corner of Jones Loop and Piper Road, where you turn left to go to the airport, there's a park on the right-hand side where campers and different things, has a large fence along the front, where they're actually housed, and they have lots there. Right past that is another piece of property, so you're out Jones Loop on the right-hand side, right past Piper Road, that enters into a large parcel of vacant land. Evidently, that's where we, at one point, were the largest pineapple grower in the whole world.
That's where the pineapple grown, right there.
Something, so there's a developer that owns that piece of property, you can see on page one seventy-four of the agenda, I believe it is, that owns that whole piece of property that generally abuts the interstate, where the truck rest area will be eventually, that F dot owns, and Jones Loop on the side coming under the interstate from the Walmart direction. There is one corner piece that is not in our service area, the rest of that whole area, including even further out, is in the city's utility service area, meaning that the long-term plans for service for anything in those areas is on the City of Plundigorda to provide. So the one corner piece that has essentially fifty homes is not in that service area, and when you look at the map, you can see that the whole project is one project, and that then abuts Jones Loop on the south side of that project, and the developer is asking that that one corner also be included in the service area, along with the total parcels, so that they can abut both sides of Jones Loop and complete the project with that corner of those parcels included. The discussion is, council would need to amend the service area boundary, and would need to allow that one corner to be included, so that the homes that are built there can be also part of the project, otherwise they would either have to eliminate those or provide services from somewhere else. So that's the discussion.
Let me also add that, wearing my MPO hat for just one minute, the former rest area at the corner of Jones Loop Road and Seventy Five, on the south, the southeast corner of that intersection, used to be a rest area, F dot is turning that into a truck depot area where they can overnight park and so forth in that area, so they're going to be refurbishing that area to make it a truck rest area. Also, the plans are at some point to widen Jones Loop Road to six lanes, all the way down from forty-one to, I believe it's going to be all the way to Piper Road, and they are going to put a roundabout in at Piper Road. So those plans are all in preparation for all of this other development that is in the works, that has been on the drawing board for several years. So I'm just putting it all out there, so that you understand that there have been plans all along to put some of these housing developments in, and the mobile home park, and all the other things that are going on on Piper Road, and they're going to have better connectivity for Piper Road all the way to seventeen by doing all of this other infrastructure improvement stuff, so, and they've been talking to city staff about this all along as well, but I just wanted to let everybody know that that is stuff that's going to go on on the part of F dot, and also the MPO of the county.
And I will mention, because I knew Tom was going to mention it, so while I'm talking, that the developer of this property, of course, would be required to provide all infrastructure that would serve to this property, and infrastructure that we deem the appropriate size to serve that area while they're building it. They have other properties that they intend to develop closer to our water treatment plant, and if indeed council sees fit to include this corner into our service area, it would probably be worth discussing with them, negotiating with them, to see if that property closer to the water treatment plant would have areas that we could also look at for additional production wells in the future, because we, we know in our long-term plan to serve the area that's currently defined in the city's utility service area, that at some point we're going to need additional off-site production wells, and that could be one of the locations, if indeed the developer, not necessarily the owner, but if the developer was able to then provide locations for additional production wells in the future.
Yeah, Greg or Tom, I probably know the answer to this question, but I can't remember it at the moment. Is a annexation agreement a part of this, of this action?
It would be a pre-annexation, pre-annexation agreement, yes.
Okay, so if the city approved the extension, it would be subject to the entry of a pre-annexation agreement? Sorry, thank you.
And at the point that these properties became contiguous, it would be up to city council to then identify whether they felt that they were benefit to the city and accepted that pre-annexation offer or not, depends on what else makes it contiguous too, and a lot of different factors at that point, but it's still city council's obligation to accept that annexation when the time would come that they become contiguous, it's not automatic.
And these are manufactured homes? If I'm reading there, manufactured homes.
I think these are single-family, huh?
They talked about single-family.
And the ordinance said, yeah, it says manufactured homes.
There's a comment that says manufactured homes, but it's in the county, so it's based on the county's ordinances, all we had is provision of service and not certain.
Are they going to be putting silver in as well?
One hundred and silver.
All right, so we need a motion.
Or discussion or question, or whatever.
Well, I'll start against the discussion, not construction. You know, I think obviously the concern is always capacity. It's always capacity, it's always, do we have this, you know, do we know this was coming? Can we service this? Obviously, the brunt of this development is already in our service area, from what I can tell, I'm guessing that fifty-ish is going to be added to that service area from a capacity standpoint, and all the, you know, infrastructure and whatnot, are we able to take that on?
So the development's about a hundred and forty acres, it's about twenty acres that are looking to be added, and like you said, about fifty homes. The fifty additional homes would not create any issues as far as capacity's concerned. As far as the infrastructure needed, that would be a requirement of the acceptance there for them to construct the necessary infrastructure.
And we do have water and sewer capacity going out there, and this project has been on the back corner for a couple of years, I've heard about it probably five or six years.
Additionally, when we take, when we do our water models and capacity analysis, the, all possible developments are considered.
Right, but then we're also looking that we have to expand, because, you know, the apartments are less, I think, as you're tagging, and we keep on hearing fifty-three, but it says residential development up to six hundred and fifteen long units, so, you know, we're not just looking at this, we have to look at the whole picture, and I think sometimes what's presented to us is a small piece of it. And we don't know, you know, it would be nice, before we even approve, to talk to them and say, we do need space maybe for some future development off of the month, you know, can we work with something?
Well, we're asking for, you do consider it, whether you approve or not approve with those conditions, so we can talk to them. And we have talked to them already about the number of homes, you know, as was identified here, we know exactly what they're going to require as far as utility, and we do have that built into our model, so the only question is, do we add the extra fifty, and if we add the extra fifty, can we discuss with them additional mitigation that they may or may not have? Now, we can't stop this development from happening, they can bring water and sewer up from Tucker's grave direction, still do it if we didn't want to serve it, but it is within our service area, so we serve that portion, but we would like to get something more out of it, and this is the point where we could do that, because they're asking for something, and we can ask for something back. Other than that, we can just serve the five hundred homes inside the boundary, and, you know, they'll still have to provide the infrastructure, and that'll be that.
Well, I guess, on clarity, maybe from my part, is this is for discussion by the city council at this time, it's not by, for action with respect to expansion of the service area, that will come back with certain documents, including the pre-annexation agreement, and whatever terms and conditions of the expansion that the city council may wish to include.
Right.
Okay.
Except the pre-annexation agreements, if indeed city council says, just for example, no, we're not going to expand our service area, then this just goes through like any other development. There's no city council approval for anything until we accept the infrastructure, because it's inside the service area, the council's already agreed to serve that area that they've identified, so it's just like the ones across from the school, or any other development in our service area. None of that comes to council for service, because some councils already approved servicing in our service area, as well as the pre-annexation agreements that council approved, starting back in two thousand and eighteen. So the only time that it would come back is because of this piece outside the service area that they're requesting to put in. That's what gives us the opportunity to negotiate, bring it back to council, and put some teeth into it, which is what we're hoping for.
Okay, so if we, if we have consensus, subject to more discussion about us being able to work with them for additional wells, or whatever we may need in that area, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're looking for, we're trying to find out if it's something the council would approve, and under what conditions.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I mean, county has lined that lineup, two Tucker's grave is there, sixteen hundred and seventy-four units going in there, plus the commercial and the hotel, so, that's all there, we can do a lot of things on that, so I have no problem with it.
Okay, so we have consensus, and then we can enter discussions with them about, first of all, we know that we want to have a pre-annexation agreement as part of the agreement to approve.
And that's required.
And that's, yeah, it's required anyway. And then to talk to them about the possibility of having extra wells for us for our expansion should be needed. Okay.
That's what we're like, you already have an ordinance that requires the pre-annexation agreements, but changing the service area boundary, and subsequently, what infrastructure we may want to discuss that's needed to do that is where we have some teeth, and we appreciate you, we are delighted to do that and bring it back.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, city clerk?
Good afternoon, council, city clerk Sarah Walsh for the record. Under announcement of vacancies, we have one consumer advocate and one alternate seat on the building board. We have one historic nonprofit representative seat on the donation review committee, and there was an error, we actually have four regular seats and one alternate seat on the historic preservation advisory board. We have one resident representative seat on the police officers pension board, and we will overturn that with Mr. Cummings' application at the next council meeting. We have one regular seat on the Plundigorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee. We have two regular seats on the utility advisory board, and then under nominations, we have two regular seats on the code enforcement board. Mr. Mark Catala and Ms. Adele Higgins' first terms on the code enforcement board will expire in November twenty twenty four. They are both eligible for and interested in reappointment. Mr. Jeffrey Fox and Mr. Ronald Louchon, currently alternates on the board, are also eligible for and interested in appointment to the regular seats on the board. Council may choose to make any desired nominations at this time.
I would like to nominate Higgins, Ms. Higgins. Can I nominate and appoint, or just?
It's up to council.
I would like to nominate and appoint Ms. Higgins.
Sure. And we do have Mark as well, Mark Catala. Well, suppose we need a, if that's your motion, and we've got a second, we need the vote for that, her first.
Okay, so.
My motion was to nominate and appoint Ms. Higgins back to the board.
Right, and we have a motion and a second to nominate and reappoint Ms. Higgins, put to the code enforcement board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And then we do have the other seat still on the code enforcement board, where we need, the council decides to make nominations, or a nomination and appointment motion.
I'll nominate and reappoint Mark Catala as well for the board.
We have a motion and a second to nominate and reappoint Mr. Mark Catala to the code enforcement board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, and then we have the, I'm sorry, I spoke earlier, we have the regular seat for the Plundigorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee on nominations at this point. Mr. Jeffrey Domingo's first term on the committee will expire on November twenty-second, he is eligible for and interested in reappointment. Mr. Alan Taylor is also eligible for and interested in appointment to the committee, he was unable to attend this date, but he did provide some information via email yesterday. So you may nominate or nominate and appoint at this time.
Can we nominate both of them?
Yes, and then we can come back and vote.
Yes, come back, yes.
Okay. All right. And then the last item we have is confirmation- And then the last item we have is confirmation. We had the September 19th, 2024 firefighter's pension board meeting, and at that time the members appointed Mr. Garrett Parkinson. We need a motion to confirm the appointment at this time.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to confirm the appointment of Mr. Garrett Parkinson as the fifth member of the firefighter's pension board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
While you're there, do you have anything else?
I did just want to mention that we are extending the deadline to renew business tax receipts by another week because of the hurricane, and the election is coming up, the deadline to register to vote has already passed, but if you would like to request a vote by mail ballot, you have until October 24th. Early voting will begin October 21st and continue through November 3rd, and you can always check the supervisor of elections website for any updates regarding polling locations, times of voting, and any other questions you have.
Thank you. City manager.
Just a couple of things. First, as I mentioned earlier, the last two years, obviously, have been brutal for city staff in trying to manage the damage and mitigation for the hurricanes that we've had. We were just getting to a point where a lot of the major issues from Hurricane Ian were being addressed. FEMA has not yet obligated a lot of the money that we've requested, but we're starting to get there, and now with two major additional stacked storms, it complicates the process tremendously. So staff, everything from finance to public works, have been working very hard, public safety people, to try to mitigate storm damage. We have a lot of weary employees out there, as I said before, battle-weary people that have been working on this quite hard. So bear with us, we appreciate all the work and the teamwork that everyone has done to come together to make this happen, and we will certainly get through this with trucks on the streets, and as things come up, we will certainly address them to the level that staff has the capability to address. So I'd like to thank all the employees and everyone that's done the work to help ensure that we had not only safe environments for our employees during the storm, but also the work to mitigate after. And as well, I'd like to thank council for bearing with us through some of these processes. A lot of government processes are tedious and arduous, but you have to go through the process, and that's, you know, our job to make sure we follow the procedures that are required, at least when you have to go through the motions for some of them, and in some cases when things can come to council so that council can make decisions that are above our pay grades or our allowable authorities, that then we can move forward with that. So thank you for that as well. And also thanks to Melissa for getting all the information out on a daily basis for the storms. I know we've tried to do as much as we could to manage that. I think there's some ideas, councilperson Lux said that there may be some opportunities that we can use for communication in the future, and, you know, we'll certainly look at those as well and see if we can increase the opportunities to communicate with the general public for things going on prior to, during, and after the storm. Prior to was an important piece that we were able to generate this time as well. So thanks to everyone for the comments, suggestions, and also for the work that's going into that.
City attorney.
Well, you also have a weary city attorney, because we see, I'm trying to keep up with all the orders that are coming out of Tallahassee. I received yesterday a first amended emergency final order from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. It has a lot of stuff in there that may or may not be applicable to the city, but one of which that caught my eye was a, some relaxation of permitting or expedition of certain permitting for the repairs, which may be relevant to the city's marina and other shoreline structures that we have. So I'm going to try to digest what's in there and give the city appropriate advice. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, one thing that I just wanted to mention, well, first of all, let me also reiterate some of the comments that have already been made. Melissa Riker, you get a absolute gold medal for all the work that you put in for the past three weeks. You know, information was flowing freely out of your office, you were extremely responsive to all of the questions that people were fielding to all of us. I'm very grateful for your help, thank you, and thank you for answering all the off-the-wall questions we seem to have received on the first, from some votes. But, you know, we're trying to be responsive, trying to answer everyone's questions as much as we could in a timely manner, and it was very important that we had open line of communication, so thank you. I was asked to just mention that the, is Kylie here?
Kylie's not here.
Did someone comment about the Halloween situation because I've been told that the Halloween committee has asked that we not do our festivities?
Yes, that's true. It's a combination of public works and the Halloween committee that really don't feel that the downtown area is going to be safe to have trick-or-treaters in, so they are recommending that we would not do the Halloween event this year that we typically do for the city.
Okay, that said, even if the city doesn't do their part, there are going to be residents, in fact, there are residents that have already gone back out with their decorations. Are we going to still close streets to keep people safe? That was the question I received.
I wanted to say while the chief's coming up that a lot of the staff that we need for Halloween, not only the employees to put our part on, but public safety employees, the police, the fire, that are typically out there when we do that, have been working 24/7 and are very tired, and putting on that kind of event in two weeks is very difficult at this point.
Chief, I'm from the police department. So I would do whatever you guys recommend that we do, but generally, city manager Murray is exactly right, they've been working nonstop 24 hours a day for the last several weeks. And then if we actually close the streets, then you're going ahead and sanctioning it, and people are going to come.
What's everyone thinking about this?
We can't do it, I mean.
Okay. I don't disagree, I just want to make sure everyone, we have to get the information out there to everyone because otherwise we're going to have egg on our face that we didn't tell people what was going on.
And we'll certainly focus patrols because we know we still have people that are walking the streets.
Absolutely, I'll be able to get some volunteers to do extra patrols, we usually add extra staff anyways. Well, for that night, we do all get to back, everybody has to work, but what we'll do is cut it back to have just enough to have some extra patrols over. So if people do still trick-or-treat, they'll be officers out.
And we even, you know, we even talked about the unfortunate possibility that you still have boats there that are sitting up, you know, you have a lot of people that are standing beside them, trying to take a picture with no lights, in the mud, and then a boat rolls over, I mean, there's so many things that could happen, it's just difficult to continue, not to mention the employees.
Yeah, we're looking out for the residents, we just wonder if they're going to be sending.
Do we know if the church is going to still do?
They canceled their events as well.
So we should get that out in our newsletters as well. Okay, thank you. And the other thing I'd like to mention, it just got publicized a couple of days ago, I was asked to let everyone know that the airshow has also been canceled because of the hurricane situation, and they felt out of respect to everyone that they wanted to postpone it this year, and we got the Blue Angels coming next year, so it's going to be a good one next year. Okay, council member comments?
I'm sorry, could I add two things to the discussion on hurricane debris? There were two things that we've done, and council could give us direction on. One is the trash carts that we have currently, a lot of people have had those float away, we've been providing carts, but we want council beware, as I mentioned before, during Ian, that cost us $24,000 to put new carts, you know, out from the ones floated away. We're still doing that unless council wants to take a different direction on that, but of course it is a cost. But people lose their carts and they're getting new ones, the small ones are, I think, $75 a cart, and so it is costing us something to do that when people leave them out. And it's not always because they leave them out, I mean, the flood can inundate and take them away, so we understand that. And then the second is commercial debris. Typically, commercial debris is not something that the city or their FEMA contractors would pick up, number one, because a lot of it is commercial or construction debris, and you don't know what's in it, so it has to be disposed of separately, and secondly, because a lot of times with commercial policies, the insurance is supposed to remediate and dispose of commercial debris because of the enforcement conditions. But at this point, given Helene and then, of course, Milton, knowing that everything has been co-mingled and we don't know what is or what isn't, our goal is to get things off the street. So unless directed differently, we're taking all debris, trying to manage it separately. If we know it's definitively commercial debris, the FEMA people that are following the trucks will make sure they note it as such, and hopefully FEMA is going to come back and then approve commercial debris removal anyway. But right now, we're just trying to get things off the street. So there's the trash carts and the commercial debris part that goes along with Halloween for the three things that council needs to be aware of.
Okay, council member comments, Scotty?
I do, Melissa, I've said this before, but you're amazing, I love the communication, thank you so much. And the other thing with all staff, I know I had the utilities department out, and one thing I saw, even with the police officers, everybody who I have some contact, always have a smile on their face, always happy to help, and it's amazing, they're exhausted and they're still smiling and wonderful people, so thank you so much for that. And I know our community has really been amazing coming together, helping each other out between floodings and fires and things like that, and I just want to say thank you to the whole community. I know I've been out of touch with no internet, and I know other people have worse things, I'm not complaining at all. And I know Veterans Day is coming up pretty soon, and I know, like I said earlier, that the parade is canceled for that. I personally, I've had town halls generally once a month, I have not had one this month. I would love to get public input, and let's see what we can do to make our community even better and be even better prepared. I mean, I know that everybody's done a great job as best as they can, but everything can always be done a little bit better, so I want to have another workshop with anybody who wants to come, put in your input, and let's see what we can do to make this the best community ever.
Melissa.
I've been lucky enough to be here since Charlie for hurricanes under my belt, and I have to say that every time, same thing, communities just get stronger, bonds get stronger, you meet neighbors that you didn't really meet before, not for any other reason, then you're just busy. So it's a positive part of a hurricane that brings out the best in people, and it's just really nice to see. I would just like to say, I am not in favor of having any meetings where we have a time limit. I don't feel like I want to be rushed or have anybody have to, you know, squash what they want to say. We only meet twice a month, I'm fine to stay here for eight hours if that's what it takes to get business done. So in the future, hopefully this won't happen again, but if we do or up against something, I'd rather cancel the meeting than have a time crunch, or just make sure knowing that that we only have like very few things on the agenda.
Unfortunately, because of city charter, we haven't had any regular meeting this month, which is why we're here today. Donna?
I too want to thank the city for all of its support, especially for the historic district. I mean, I've been here for every hurricane since Charlie, and I will say that the last two have been the worst episodes that I can recall. The damage in the downtown historic area, you know, where the businesses are and especially where the residents, is really heartbreaking. I mean, so many people, you know, after Helene and then got hit again, and what I hear is they want to stay, but I think a lot of people are now concerned about staying. So I think we have to start talking about resiliency for this community, we're not going to be able to fix it overnight, but we really have to get going and talking about what we can do. And again, I want to thank Melissa, spectacular job, uninformation, and police and fire for all your support.
Yeah, I also, you know, thank our staff with an amazing job they did through all of that. A lot of people unfortunately trying to equate what happened in the last two storms with flooding and three not flooding, this is a surge, and the only way to fix it would be to build a dike around the entire city. And if we could look back, which also would cost trillions of dollars, you know, unfortunately, because you look at from Tampa on down, all of the, the most close to the water, all got slammed, which is because the winds were out of the wrong direction. Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about that. As far as getting a message out, because I hear that a lot from different people, the one channel, the one thing they listen to more than anything else, is the weather channel. In the weather channel, you can actually, city can buy onto that, get our message, just scroll along the bottom. The reason I know that, we were in Ohio, is in, her dad, and they hadn't had any rain up there in three months, and I think it was tinder drought, and it was scrolling along the bottom for the residents of that county. Could maybe think about that, might be something we want to look into, so we get the message out to our citizens, because everybody I've talked to was watching the weather channel. Just something to think about.
You know it's bad when Cantori comes to town.
Yes, it is. We kept calling him fall in the water. There's a side to that, he, the member, they didn't have any guests, they had a person who works with them, and they treated him like a king, so they took, gave him the, whatever he wanted when it came to states, and he took his cup, palm out, he said it was about this big. Nice to be in Chinatown, that's all I have to say.
Okay, if there'd be enough further business, we are adjourned, and we'll see everyone on November 6th.